Thank you very much, everyone. Welcome to our second Town Council meeting of the year. Madam Clerk.
This is to inform, oh, okay. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 16, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 25, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And we are going to start our conference agenda today with a presentation from our library board president, as well as Dave Kubi, who is our library director. And we're also joined by Anthony Iovino, who is the architect who's worked on the project for the library. And I'm not sure who's starting. Marge, are you starting?
Excuse me, yes, I am going to start.
Thank you.
So, um, thank you. Good evening, Madam President, Mathieu Brown, and good evening to all our council members. So, thank you for giving us this time to present plans for a new library and the many opportunities for new services it will afford the residents of West Orange. As Council President just mentioned, I will be joined by our Director Dave Kubi and our Architect Anthony Iovino. So, the first slide is, what are the advantages and opportunities that afford our residents? One of the things, if you're familiar with real estate, you know that location, location, location is so important, and the library took this into consideration. We are geographically centered in the township, which is convenient for all of our residents. For those who are in the outliers, there is a jitney service. The new location is close to ShopRite, and that's another advantage. This is a green project, a green environment project. We have ample parking for over 300 cars, which is a huge difference. We only have 32 spaces presently. And the space allows for reclamation of trees and gardens, which will enhance it quite a bit. And we have outdoor space for what we call a black box theater, which is a presentation of plays and programs that can be done outdoors. And we're utilizing an existing building, which is really green. We're not starting from scratch. It's a bigger, better, healthier space environment with all-new HVAC in ductwork system with quality air care. We have our main programming space, which doubles to 150 seats. And there is a separate entrance from the outside, which is a huge difference from what we have now. There's 28% increase in usable flexible space, which is something very important because we change whatever programming that we're doing. The children's area is two and a half times larger with a dedicated programming room for parents who bring their young children to the children's room. You know, that's a big advantage where you can actually stay somewhat in the background and watch what's going on. We have teen space, which is four times larger. We have quiet room space for conferencing, and we have instructional space. So, that's very important, too. One thing we don't have now is a separate room for a server and IT services, which is really required, though it's temperature-controlled. And we will have a separate room for our West Orange Historical Archives. Maybe the most important thing, too, besides parking, I view as additional technology, which we don't have interactive presentations, which we will be able to do. Laptops for checkout, online instructions from universities, virtual classes, which will enhance it. And our financial benefits, it's only $203 per square footage. And our Library Construction Act bond, which was approved in November, provides almost $3,100,000 matched by our township's partnership with private developers for $2.5 million and an additional $598,000 funds that were already approved by the township for improvements in 46 Mount Pleasant. So, keep in mind that these funds cannot be used for any other facility, including our present library. And we will talk about the other advantages for the location. So, Lauren, the next slide, and Dave.
Dave, you're actually muted right now.
One of the concerns that we had when we were investigating when the proposition was put before us was what would be the advantages to the community. One of my experiences as a library director is that the more convenient the library location is, is the greater the community's engagement will be with it. I've created two green circles on this, which are in circle both the 46 Mount Pleasant site, which is, you know, our current location, as well as the proposed site of Ten Rooney Circle. What the circles indicate is, is those circles are one mile across. And the reason I did that is there is a study that was done by the National Institute of Health, which we have, if you go to our website, www.wopl.org, we have all of these documents on the page, so you can explore further. And of course, you can always reach us and ask more questions. Is that, what this study indicated is that people don't walk more than .5 to .7 miles on average to go anywhere. And so, and the .7 represents recreational walking, such as with your dog. So, I wanted to point that out. For the size of West Orange, if you could back out just a little bit, for the size of West Orange, you'll see that there is no single location that could make, that is walkable or easily accessible by anything other than travel by public transportation or, or a car. And as Marge pointed out, the new location does have over 300 parking spots, which in conversations with previous directors, there was always a problem in the strategic plans in terms of the amount of parking. But what we're hoping, what we're aiming for is an expansion of service to have both library services at our current location and expand it to a more centrally-located location. If you could, now, in terms of how people will find it, if you could go, and this represents, if you go to the next slide, how people will find it. Mr. Iovino put together a wayfinding study. The complete study is available, so you can see what the signage would look like. As you see, there's, there's a yellow, blue, and violet, which represent different types of signage. There's library street signage, library wayfinding markers, and hanging library banners. And you can see examples of what all of these would be on our website. And as you see, the signage is pretty robust, and this will lead people back to the location that's on the library, which is on the upper portion of it, near 280. You'll see that there. And now, without any further ado, I'd like to have Mr. Iovino, our architect, take us through the really great plan for the expanded facility at Ten Rooney Circle.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Lauren, if we can go to the next. So, these next two pages are just photographs for the public in case they aren't familiar with the Ten Rooney site. It's an existing two-and-a-half-story office building, two stories at grade, and one is below, but the site slopes down. So, the photograph at the bottom of that page is taken from where that new hotel is, and the highway is just on the other side of the building. So, the site slopes down. This is the high point of the site, and it slopes down into the large parking area, which is beyond the building from this vantage point. Next. The top is, is an aerial. The square building in the center is, is the building in question. At the bottom is the hotel and the highway just above. And the bottom photograph is actually on that property just beyond all of the parking area is this great green space that meanders through the corporate area. And the next, the next slides we'll go through are the floor plan. And instead of just a flat floor plan, we've done it in this perspective view to help people get a sense of the volume of the space. The library is going to occupy the ground floor of that building. There's a tenant up on the top floor, and the library will also occupy a portion of the lowest level. This graphic here is the main level. The highway, for reference, would be at the top of this image. So, the picture we had before showing the whole building at the side of that hotel is roughly the same perspective here. If we look along the left side of this graphic, there are a set of doors, and there's a white area right in the center of that, that floor plan. Exactly. That's the entrance to the current building. So, since we have to allow for the tenant space above and potential some other spaces below, that lobby is common. And what I should say in terms of the color code for this plan, the dark blue areas that are at the top are adult spaces. The yellow areas that are to the right are young adults and children's. At the very bottom, the brown area is a staff space, and the, the light blue or gray area is common areas, meeting rooms essentially. So, if we start with that meeting room, Marge alluded to 150-seat meeting space. This basically doubles what the library has now. It essentially is one room that could be subdivided into two. And what's really great about it is it has doors directly to that lobby space. So, if we have after our events, could be a large planning board meeting, could be a large community meeting, a movie night, things like that, they can occur without the library being open. Inside that common area in white are public restrooms. So, this can operate completely separate from the rest of the library, a great asset to have. If I, if I just take you around this building, Lauren, go to the next slide. Great, thank you. So, again, the yellow is the children's area. I'm just around on the other side of it. I want you to have a close-up look of this. So, all throughout this ground floor, we're trying to have low shelving so that we maximize sightlines through the space. We want it to be more retail-like, while everybody still has their own areas. So, adults have their areas, seniors will have their areas, older children and younger children will have their areas. Within the, the children's area here, on the left side of the yellow, is where the youngest kids would be, and there are small pods and a learning center there, a staff point in the center for great sightlines. And then the, the collection area is just below that. And along the right side of the, of the wall are two meeting spaces. So, there's a room, yep, right there, that would be for the youngest kids' programs area. And just outside of that is an area for parents to sit and wait. And so, we would have a, a wall with glass up at a certain height so that the kids aren't distracted by their parents, but the parents could keep an eye on the kids. And to the right of that would be a young adults area. So, in today's libraries, young adults areas could be everything from teamwork to gaming exercises. And that space would be open and flexible for that, enclosed just enough to keep the sound from migrating everywhere else. Lauren, go to the next slide. We'll see other parts a little bit better. So, we're rotating again. This is the focus on the adult area. Just for reference, the highway is to the left. So, if we look at the very bottom of our image, there are, again, some more brown-colored areas, and those are the administrative offices for the library. To the top of that is another meeting space or quiet reading area with some tables in it. So, for most of the day, that could be open all the time for everyone. And then, if we need that overflow meeting space, we can close that down. To the right of that administrative area are four small rooms. Those are quiet study rooms. Those would be for one or two people. In today's world, especially right now, those will be very valuable. And I can imagine having assigned times for those rooms, having them cleaned, if you will, between each time, which is a whole new world for, for public buildings. But, you know, so far, I've described the large meeting room, the programs room for the kids, the quiet study room, and four quiet study cubicles, if you will. So, you know, we're, we're up to six to seven different rooms so far that are in contrast to your one meeting room in your current library. Next slide. And this perspective is back to the wall that you would enter on. The highway is at the back of this image, and this shows more of the adults area. And one thing to point out here is when you walk into this building in that center section, if anybody knows the building now, you walk in and you can't see a thing. Everything is solid walls. Here, we want you to be able to walk in and look left or look right and see into the library. So, here, we would be able to walk in, come to the left, right into the adults area. That curved desk is the center staff position, the, the circulation desk. But also, when you come straight in those doors, there's a set of stairs that would be new, and they would go directly down to the lower level, which houses most of the taller stacks of collection and adult areas. And Lauren, the next slide will take us right down there in the same view. And you see here, what's, you know, you can't miss the fact that there is this outdoor area on the left side of this image. This space is for independent reading, smaller events, larger events, a tie-in to what could happen in the whole parking area that's just outside of this, from crafts fairs to art fairs, food fairs, things like that, that tie the outdoor to the indoors. So, the area in blue inside is essentially fiction, nonfiction stacks. The dense collection is here because, again, upstairs, we wanted to keep the low stacks for the sightlines and the weight loads. The library does not occupy the entire area of the basement, and the basement is only this half of the building. The other half does not have a basement. So, if we, if we look at the right corner of this image, there are a couple of small rooms that have furniture in them, right? So, that is the archives, the IT room, some staff spaces. And, and as we develop this design, we'll probably open them up more with glass, so it makes them more inviting. I did want to also point out that there is an elevator between these two floors. There is, right in the center of that graphic is a, is a box where two people are standing. Lauren, you've been really great so far with that cursor. Just above that. Keep going up. Yes, bingo. It's an existing elevator that serves the whole building. It's a second elevator. It was put in after the original building was completed as, I think, as a, as a freight elevator, if you will. We're going to change it around and make it exclusively for the library. So, you would come into the library upstairs, you don't go back into the public space, you come down the elevator, and you're in the library still. And, and that allows security and control, but it makes the entire building, the entire library, fully ADA accessible, which is very important. Lauren, the next slide. This is our last image, and I'm just rotating around just to show that this level, this, this lower level also has an exit way. So, at the very bottom, there's another set of doors and a hallway that goes straight through that gets to the library. This would not be an entrance for the library. But you could come in here and walk up a set of stairs in, in the public zone and get to the formal entrance of the library. The rest of the areas in white are spaces that have not been allocated and aren't related to the library just yet. So, that, that wraps up the, the walkthrough of our floor plans.
Thank you very much, Anthony, and Marge, and Dave, for taking the time to join us this evening, as you give us such a wonderful presentation to what the potential library and executive drive could look like. I know you have all worked very, very hard on the grant application. Congratulations on that award. And, and also to ensure that council had this presentation as well as public did. So, thank you very much for your time, and you're welcome to stay and join us as, as you wish, but we will now move on to our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you.
And, okay, so, I am looking at the time. It is 7 o'clock, and, well, 6 minutes to 7 o'clock, and typically, 7 o'clock is when we start our public meeting. So, I am going to, for this meeting, not ask Mr. Sayers, I'm sure he's happy about that, not going to ask for the update on redevelopment, as we did receive an update about two weeks ago. So, as well as council liaison, I'm going to ask that we hold off on that for now and enter in the next six minutes. Unless someone has a very quick announcement that they'd like to make, I, I'll leave it to my council colleagues. Can we do council liaison reports in six minutes?
Yeah, yeah, I could be quick.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, no, I do wanted to, the Degnan House, everyone has been vaccinated there who, who wanted to be. I give kudos to Debbie Salinardi and all her hard work. Walmart has come in, she secured Walmart through HUD. The other senior houses have been vaccinated, Willen Valley, Jewish Federation, and our health department is working on securing vaccinations for the rent-a-house as well as homebound seniors. So, just wanted to get that out there. And you could go to www.westorange.org/vaccine. There's a seven-page document to give you all information about vaccination. So, please, very important, if you haven't gotten a COVID vaccine, read up on it and sign up. So, wanted to get that out there. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you for doing our council liaison. I won't go into all the details, but I will just invite everyone to go to woarts.org to see all of the exhibits and what is going on at the West Orange Arts Council. Next Wednesday will be the planning board meeting, 7:30. We're still continuing virtual meetings on Zoom. That will be February 3rd. And tomorrow night will be the first West Orange Environmental Commission meeting at 7 o'clock. If you visit westorange.org, go to the calendar for the Zoom link to join. We have a very extensive agenda going on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman Williams, I don't see you on my screen, but is there an announcement for you?
Ms. Williams, I'm sorry, you're muted.
Sorry about that, thank you. Just wanted to note that I have the rent-a-house as council liaison and the Historic Preservation Commission, and neither of those have had any activity to report at this time. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And I see that Councilman Rutherford, did you have a, we've got three minutes for your update.
Yeah, just one thing we're working on with Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board is bylaws, and we have not yet elected officers as we should have with our first meeting, but we will get to that at our next meeting.
Wonderful, thank you. And if there are any administrative reports, you have three minutes as well. Otherwise, if there is no objection, Mr. Trank, were you about to say something?
I wanted to thank Councilwoman Williams and Councilman Rutherford for giving us an opportunity to meet with them last night, to bring them up to speed on Central Avenue. And we're obviously hoping in early February to be back to the council as to the next phase, which will hopefully include 94 units on the Selecta Flash/Biddleman property, approximately 22 spaces for the, for the public, that region, especially the Luna Theater, you know, availability, and 17 affordable units on Tompkins. So, we will be back to you, but I appreciate both council persons giving the time last night, so we could give them kind of the history.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. And Madam Clerk, I know we're scheduled to start our public portion of the meeting at 7 o'clock. We have two minutes, so we'll give everyone a two-minute reprieve before we start our public comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought you were going to ask me to sing karaoke or something.
Only, only if it's Bon Jovi karaoke.
There you go.
With the air guitar, by the way.
I was living my best Van a White life with pointing out the, the meeting. I was having a lot of fun pointing out.
Oh, yeah.
So, if I need a new job, I can be a pointer for presentations.
I was certainly going to chat that to you, but I didn't make you laugh out loud.
I like when Lauren plays beatle music.
Yeah. Yeah, but then we got copyright striked if I put it to you, too. So, I can only do copyright written, royalty-free.
Well, I wanted to thank the library for the presentation and just the versatile community design that was just presented. Looks like it has so much potential, and I see gallery space in there also. Plenty of it.
Madam Clerk?
Okay. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on October 31, 2019, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on November 7, 2019. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
And it.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present.
Okay, this is the meeting that was recessed January, our last meeting, January 5th. And we do need to recess it again until February 9th, so I need a motion to do so.
So, move.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And now, I'm going to start our public meeting for this evening. This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. The annual notice was emailed to the Star Ledger and filed in the Township Clerk's Office on November 30, 2020, and published in the West Orange Chronicle on December 10, 2020. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Councilman Rutherford?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Present.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Present.
Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are opening up public comment at this time. Lauren, if you can just explain to the public, those who would wish to speak, how to proceed in doing so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. So, yes, if you would like to speak during public comment, you're going to use the raise-your-hand feature located at the bottom of your screen. If you don't see it, you may just touch your screen, and it will appear back for you. And if you're one of our call-in attendees, it is star nine. You only have to press it once, and anyone can speak. You don't have to wait for someone else to end their, their section. You can push the button at any time. We are going to ask you for your name and address for the record when you are called on. So, Mr. Fagan, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Well, thank you, Madam Moderator, Joe Fagan, Public Information Officer. Good evening, Madam President, and best regards to all your council colleagues on this snowy January day. Before I would, before I begin, I just want to wish a very happy birthday to the West Orange Public Library that turned to the West Orange Public Library that turned 70 this past Sunday. They look great for their age, although they've been in their current building for the last 62 years. This evening, I would like to open with some positive news regarding our community and volunteerism. Last fall, I presented information on an Eagle Scout project that has been completed when two new benches were constructed in front of the West Orange Public Library. Tonight, I am pleased to report another Eagle Scout, an Eagle Scout project has been completed in West Orange. Gus Peterson, a West Orange high school sophomore and member of Scout Troop 6, repainted the wall at Hazel Avenue School. He lives in the neighborhood and has seen the condition of the wall slowly deteriorate over the years. He's a former student from Hazel Avenue School and decided it would be a good idea to fill in the cracks, pull up the weeds, remove the moss, and give it a fresh coat of paint. It should also be noted that Rossi Paint and Orange donated the paint in support of Gus Peterson in the name of helping to beautify our community and add to our quality of life. I would also like to mention that there was, that there is a shredding date coming up at the West Orange Environmental Center on 590 Mount Pleasant Avenue on April 11th. Now, I know it's only January, but I wanted to mention this well in advance because many inquiries have been coming into the mayor's office. So I wanted to get the information out early enough so town residents could mark their calendars. Information about the event is up on our website and I will make subsequent reminders as we draw closer to the date. I also received information just this afternoon that Representative Mikey Sherrill will be holding her first town meeting, first town home meeting of 2021 virtually on Thursday, January 28th. That's this Thursday, and it will focus on the COVID-19 vaccine and New Jersey's distribution plans. Representative Sherrill will be joined by local officials who will provide information about the vaccination process in New Jersey and help answer questions from residents. All are invited to register to call into the meeting at, at her website. You can look that up easily enough on the internet. The meeting will perhaps help clear up any confusion with the vaccine rollout, which it has experienced, and we'll be sure to offer the latest up-to-date information. I would also like to remind town residents to only seek information on the vaccine or any other issue, COVID-related or not, from official sources. Do not rely on information found on social media to always be accurate and up, up to date. Also, as a reminder, I would like to mention that if anyone receives a call from a contact tracer to please cooperate and be forthcoming with truthful information, I urge everyone to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. Finally, I will close with this piece of information. As you know, Madam President, West Orange residents take the importance and protection of our trees very seriously. I therefore set out to find West Orange's oldest documented tree. I didn't have to look very hard and most would be surprised to find out where it is located. It is hiding in plain view and right in front of the West Orange Community House on Main Street. There was a plaque placed there in 1987 located behind the tree, confirming that the tree was there at the signing of the U.S. Constitution in 1787. That would make it about 234, 234 years old. It was declared such by the National Arbivorous Association and the International Society of Arbor Culture. So next time you come to shop downtown or check out the hometown hero banners, pull over and check out the tree. By the way, Madam President, I have one thing in common with the tree. Although I am a bit younger than the tree, we both cast a sizable shadow. So, on that note, I conclude my report and give you all my best wishes to stay safe and wear your masks. Thank you and have a good meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan. Next, we have Sally Malanga. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening, 57 Ridge Road, Sally Malanga.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, that was a wonderful surprise from Mr. Joe Fagan about that tree down at the community center. It's one of my favorite trees also. And we, so many of us just, you know, we pass it by, we drive under it, and it's a giant. And so, I'm proud to have that tree and I'm so glad that Joe took the time to let us know how old it is. I wanted to bring up a second issue, which is, you'll be considering the Executive Drive, area in need of redevelopment, 425 apartment units, plan that was presented at the planning board last week. And some of the residents raised the issue at the planning board as to whether or not these units would be LEED certified, which means have every environmental technology that's available today to be required by the town. So, I hope you will require that because I think it's very important to our reputation. One is, we are the home of Thomas Edison. We are the home of invention. And if we're going to bring in a big apartment complex, doesn't it make sense to require it to have all the modern, energy-saving, environmentally responsible technologies available today? Why, why allow the builders to use 1970s construction techniques when we should be using the 21st century construction techniques? And I, I also want to mention that one of the reasons why you declared an area in need of redevelopment is because you stated you wanted a seat at the table, you want to direct the project, you want to have it be the best for West Orange. And to do that would make sure that it was super, have super amenities, have great technology that's energy-saving, water, water-saving and environmental. And that would mean enough charging stations, proper roof, good safety. I mean, I think there is also other issues as well that it shouldn't be cheap construction. It should, it should be safe construction. We don't want any accidents there. I understand it did not have a proper fire lane. It's wood construction as opposed to metal construction on the inside. It's got some issues that I hope you will require them to do better on. And that concludes my comments and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
President, may I interject at this point?
Can we, I'm sure that there's some others that will likely reference this? Can we just wait until public comment?
Well, that's why I want to reference it now because I don't know that Sally, if Sally was at the planning board meeting last weekend, but there was a healthy and hearty discussion about doing exactly what Sally's recommending. And she may not know, but there is an amendment to the ordinance that's on tonight's agenda that created a sustainability plan. So, the, many of the issues that she just raised, plus many more, are, is the amendment that was attached to tonight's ordinance. I just wanted to let everyone know that we are well aware of those issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, it's just listed as Shannon. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Shannon Gattens. I'm at 17 Orange Heights Avenue. I understand that the first reading of the HRC ordinance revisions is on the agenda tonight, and I just wanted to make a brief comment. I currently serve as the secretary on the commission. And since June, when a meeting was called to address the George Floyd murder, we have really made a concentrated effort on the HRC to listen to the community and identify priorities, including convening a community task force, creating a strategy, and as you'll see tonight, proposing some ordinance changes. And I just want to stress that besides just some updates to make the language more inclusive and more modern, the, we were trying to primarily address autonomy for the HRC in order to, what we think would be to best serve the community. So I want to thank you for taking the time to read the ordinance and I thank you for the consideration. That's it, 3 minutes and 57 seconds.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Sarah Zorn. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, this is Sarah Zorn, 74 Watson Avenue. It should come as no surprise to many of you on the council that I am calling in to speak about concerns about the animal shelter. I very much appreciate the conversations that I and many others have already begun with you guys. Certainly, we look forward to continuing those conversations, being part of a dialogue and helping to affect change. I don't want to go into too many details about demands and ideas and issues here because I outlined, I outlined a lot of those in my correspondence to you guys. And we actually drew up a list of what we consider to be pressing issues that we want to address. I just wanted to call in to let you know very respectfully that we plan to be a serious thorn in your side until something is done because that's what animal lovers are like. And I think a lot of you have seen with your own eyes and can agree that there are some serious issues at work at the shelter, a lot of them longstanding, a lot of them just coming to light maybe for you guys, certainly for a lot of us. What's transpired in this last week, which I know for a lot of you seems like a flurry of interest that never existed before, but I think it's really gone to show that there's a real lack of transparency and oversight as far as the shelter is concerned. So many residents are not even aware that the West Orange Animal League exists. For those of us that are aware, like myself, you know, honestly, during this entire time of COVID, it had never even occurred to me that there were animals at the shelter that, and if there were, that they weren't being taken care of, that there weren't best efforts being made to adopt them. Because anybody who's in rescue knows that if anything, COVID has sort of been the one silver lining and that it's been really amazingly easy to adopt rescue animals. Shelters are turning over animals many times over. So the idea that there are animals in the shelter for this entire year with very little companionship, it's just broken our hearts beyond. And this isn't an issue that's only existed during COVID. It, it just, you know, it, certainly in the couple of years I've lived here, I know how hard it is to get in touch with anybody at the shelter. The West Orange Animal League is in the building for a, maybe an, maybe an hour each day. The ACOs, I don't believe they're in there much more than that. Any claims to the contrary, I don't feel are accurate or true. The fact is, there's very little presence of people in the shelter with the animals during COVID, beyond COVID. And it's just for animals to thrive and to have them in a situation where they're ever going to be adopted. My husband is a trainer and would vouch for this, but you don't need to be a trainer to know that animals need companionship, interaction, exercise to be able to thrive in homes. And that's not happening in the shelter. There are a lot of short-term solutions that could happen to change that. We could certainly lift some of the COVID restrictions, open up the hours for the West Orange Animal Welfare League, increase the time that the ACOs are present. There's no lack of volunteerism on this issue. Myself and so many others are dying, dying, dying to help out here. So we're not just issuing edicts. There are a lot of ways that we could be helpful, including marketing the animals, helping out with social media outreach. So we're not, you know, just laying, out here laying blame. But just because the shelter has operated in the way it has, for whatever reason, for how many years, doesn't mean that it needs to continue this way. There are a lot of ways to make short-term changes. There are a lot of ways to make long-term changes. Certainly, the facility needs to really be, the change of facility needs to be part of the long-term plan. Anybody who has eyes knows that that's not an acceptable facility. There is no dog run there, despite some claims to the contrary. There are no green spaces. Animals need that to thrive. It's only right, whether you have one animal there in 20. So we really hope to continue this conversation. There may be other people on the call tonight that want to speak on this, but I certainly am eager to carry this forward and see what we could do to advocate for our animals and give them a healthy life and a happy life, whether they're in homes or under our care in shelters. So thank you, guys.
Cynthia?
Thank you, Sarah.
I missed her address.
It's 74 Watson Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry.
And next, we have Cynthia Schwartz. If you can follow the prompt on your, your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Okay, so, don't be surprised by the voice, but my name is Phil Litwinoff. Cynthia is my wife. We live at 11 Linden Avenue in West Orange. I've been a resident of West Orange since 1977. And I will tell you, my wife and Cynthia since 1986. I want to speak about the library reports. And unfortunately, both people who spoke before have signed off on the, on the site. I realize that we're far down the road in this thing, but as a longstanding resident of West Orange and one who's paid a lot of tax to this town, I just want to be on record of saying that I objected this entire process of moving the library to a remote area in this, the back, in the back section of Essex Green. David QB spoke about people don't walk more than a half a mile. Well, you know, from 11 Linden Avenue to the library is a little bit over a mile. Used to be shorter where there was a bridge over the Royway River, but that got closed. The one thing about that walk is that I can walk on sidewalks and be safe. Once the library, if the library will be moved to Essex Green, I can't do that anymore. To walk out up Mount Pleasant Avenue is treacherous. There are no sidewalks. The traffic is intense, especially near the Goddard School when you get to the traffic signal. The idea of throwing a jitney service in, in order to handle people is yet another tax burden on the members of the township. It's a nice location that they built. I would still challenge the township, since location, 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 as the president of the Board of Trustees said, is tantamount, is that take the present location that they're in, take the building down and retrofit it so that it can become a library as to where we have been for, as it was said before, 70 years in this township. It will benefit the members of the township more so than in a remote location stuck at the back of a hotel behind a shopping center in Essex Green. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we just have you actually spell your last name for the record?
Sure, it's L.I.T.W.I.N.O.F.F.
Thank you so much. Okay. And next, we have Jerry S. If you can follow the prompt on your screen. And going forward, I'm also going to ask you not only for your name and address for the record, but also for everyone to spell their last names for us. So, Jerry?
Good evening. Name is Gerald Sweeney, funny for Oak Bend, West Orange. I want to speak on behalf of the library. All the advantages were outlined. It's not always obvious that the presentation is connected to the rest of the agenda. The rest of the agenda is the approval of a redevelopment plan. And the new library with all of the great advantages is currently dependent on approval of a redevelopment plan as it would be located in the Essex, excuse me, the Executive Drive redevelopment area. The, the advantages were spelled out, I'm not going to go over them. And by the way, my five minutes still seems to be staying there, so that's, that's positive. But what was important is that last year, the Township Council adopted a resolution effectively concluding that the current building is faulty design and arrangement, obsolete, lacks the proper equipment, and it's detrimental to public health and welfare. So, the new library has to be created and moved ahead. Ms. Malanga suggested that the... Ms. Malanga suggested that the technology in the new building should be upgraded as we are a town of Thomas Edison. Thomas Edison is known for technology and innovation. Our library should be that too. The library should present the functional capability, technology and space that is functionally necessary for a modern library and a library for the future here. As to its location, the, I would hope that there would be some consideration of a satellite library kept at the current site. The main library would be at the new building. That's where all the money is for. That's what the plans are. And it's, it has a bigger space that is needed to have the kind of space and technology and layout that was presented in the plan. You can't put that in the current space. So, but the, having a, a satellite library at the current location, a small one, would be incredibly helpful as the community is really spread out. You soften the two green circles that Mr. QB showed. As to the, the location, if you include both of those green circles, you cover a lot more space. Traveling, yes, we have 280. It is hard to get around with 280. That's been around for many years. There's not much we can do about it. We have big hills. And unfortunately, most of West Orange, if you want to get to any place, you have to drive. In any event, I speak in favor of the new library and I hope tonight, the actions that are necessary, that is approval of a redevelopment plan that is, that includes, or will provide for this new library will move ahead. And if it doesn't, we hope you'll move ahead on the library with a new kind of library and utilize the $3 million in the grants and all the others that have done. And finally, I want to thank the Library Board with Marge as president, Dave QB as the director, and Mr. Iovino, the architect. But for the three of them and all working together, we would still be in the old and dated library that we're in. In any event, thank you all. And, and I look forward to your favorable decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joyce Harley. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give your name and spell your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Thank you so much. It's Joyce Harley, H A R L E Y. And my address is 513 Smith Manor Boulevard. And of course, that's here in West Orange. And I'm speaking to you this evening as a newer member of the Human Relations Commission and someone who served on the task force that was created by the Human Relations Commission. And I'm speaking to you and asking you to please table the ordinance that would change the structure of the HRC. And I do so, although I'm new to the HRC, I am not new to the field of diversity, inclusion and equity, having worked and proud to have worked in that arena for corporations, government and academia. I took my job seriously when I was asked to serve on the task force. I interview now over 70 families, individuals, business owners in West Orange to find out their concerns, their interests, what they wanted the HRC to do. And they shared with me very frankly, and they were very diverse. They came from all over West Orange. I learned what up the way, down the way meant. They are diverse by age, by gender, by race, by ethnicity and by language. And their concerns are not being represented in this ordinance. The ordinance is designed to, and I was told this at a meeting and while we were given such a rush to hurry up and wordsmith it, that the reason that we had to see it this evening, the reason you council members had to see it this evening was that it was important to do it so that the mayor would not have a chance to appoint his chairperson. I found that appalling because I spoke to so many people and they were not at all concerned about the structure. They were concerned about the substance of the HRC. And so I'm asking you to table this to give us more time to properly wordsmith it, to make sure the interests of the community are represented. And also, by the way, if the ordinance that you got is the ordinance that I got, it's replete with misspelled words, punctuation errors and grammatical errors. And I was particularly appalled by the notions that were shared at our meeting when we discussed this, that the chairs and not just the most immediate chair, but other chairs were so devoid of independence that they were so controlled by whatever mayor appointed them, that the work of the HRC had not been done. And yet, not one instance of a program, one instance of a policy, one instance of an idea could be given, not one example of any of those things being forwarded because people were being led by the nose, by the mayor to do or not do what his bidding was. People wanted to make sure that their children would have access if they were differently able. They wanted to make sure that sexual harassment would have the same time and attention that race discrimination gets. And when I heard those comments about the weakness and being under the dominion and control of the mayor by the former chairs, I found that insulting and offensive. And if you had heard the comments that were made about your colleague who sits on the council now, the first black woman ever elected to serve in West Orange, you would be equally offended. And I believe that an apology is due her by those people who made those remarks. They know who they are. It's on the record. You can listen to the tape. But I beg you to please do not move this ordinance forward tonight until such time as it can be properly wordsmithed and the interest of the community can be shared. Commissioner Jones gave a good description of diversity, inclusion and equity. He said diversity is being invited to the dance. Inclusion is being asked to dance. And council members, I would submit that equity is being, would be being given enough time on the dance floor. And that's all I'm asking for. Six months, that's been worked on this that we're told is a jot in time. Give us a little more time. I'm not looking for six months, but I know that this ordinance is flawed and it does not represent the interests of the people that we took the time to spoke to. They did not care about the structure. They wanted to make sure that the HRC really addressed diversity, inclusion.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, it's listed as DT. If you can give us your name, spell it and your address for the record, please.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great, thanks so much. I wanted to respond to-
I'm sorry, we just need your name and address and if you can spell your name.
Of course. It's Darren Tobia, last name T O B I A. And I live at 24 Columbia Street.
Thank you.
And I wanted to respond to Councilmember McCartney when she was referring to the, to the debate she had at the planning board meeting about leads being lead compliant. Many of us did, of course, attend the planning board meeting. And yes, many of us were happy about the debate we heard. And we appreciate the importance that, that Planning Board members McCartney and Klein placed on lead compliance. But many of our requests is to have Executive Drive not simply be lead compliant or built to lead, but we want to push for official lead certification. This certification inspires trust that all standards were met and there was no corners cut. And the certification eventually pays for itself. It attracts the kind of green-minded clients we want in West Orange. And next, as I mentioned, Councilmember McCartney has pushed to clarify language in Susan Grohl's plan about sustainability. We would also like to see stronger, clearer language regarding the use of native plants in the project. These plants are not only beautiful, but they are also the most sustainable plants a township can promote. The language is currently, just for reference, is currently on page 30. And it, it, it currently states that native plants shall be utilized for, for plantings to the extent feasible. And if you're interested, I encourage you to reach out or any of the council members to reach out to the Native Plant Society of New Jersey. It's a great organization. And the best part is they have an Essex County chapter. Lastly, I just wanted to clarify some of the details that I believe are missing from Susan Grohl's plan. I was curious about how many total residents there are, residents there will be at the, at the site. I'm sure this amount is in flux, but an estimate would be greatly appreciated. Second, I've heard a lot about this animal shelter, this would-be animal shelter, but I don't see this mentioned anywhere in the plan. And I'm just curious what happened to that. And last, I, I was curious how the jitney service will be funded. If this is a hidden cost that will fall on the shoulders of West Orange residents, I believe it is incumbent on the council that they should know how it will be funded before the plan is approved. Because without a jitney service, this plan fails the residents. And, and I, I do believe without it, it limits the very people that should benefit from a library the most. And that's all. Thank you so much.
Hey, thank you. And next, we have Rob R. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, give us your name and spell it and your address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, this is Rob Reese at 73 Valley Way. Last name R E E S is in Sam E.
Thank you.
Well, we have, oh, let me start over here. Councilmembers, we've established our starting date for the 2021 Farmer's Market will be May 16th. I apologize. It'll be May 15th, May 15th of 2021. I wanted to, you know, first speak to asking each and every one of your help in helping us ramp up volunteers for this year's market. I know with COVID, it's going to be rough trying to find folks that are willing. But we need the help in order to make this season a success. So volunteers, volunteers, volunteers. Secondly, we're also in the process of lining up all of our vendors for the 2021 season. So anyone that can think of vendors or has contacts or wants to help us get the word out in regards to vendors, that would be extremely helpful. They would simply email info@wofarmersmarket.com and we would do a pre-screening to make sure that they fit in with our mission. And then we would go through the process of getting them signed up as a vendor for the season. We offer full-time vendors, the discount if they pay in full by March. We also offer three different plans. We offer a full-time plan, which is every Saturday participation. We offer a part-time plan, which is participating every other Saturday. And then we offer a monthly plan, which is participating one time a month throughout the season. This year, we will end on October 30th. And God willing, with COVID, we'll be able to run a fantastic trunk-or-treat event again this year. But yeah, it's exciting. We're ramping up for the 2021 Farmer's Market season. We wanted to ask your help in spreading the word and getting it out there. The Farmer's Market website, wofarmersmarket.com. And again, that email address, info@wofarmersmarket.com. And separately from this, I did want to take a moment just as a, as a member of the township community and a resident here. You know, the issues with the animal shelter, you know, are deep to my heart. And I just have to ask, you know, each and every one of you to please investigate the information that is being shared. You know, I, I obviously am not involved. I don't know which end is up. But I do ask that it's investigated. And if there are things awry, that we hopefully get those straightened out. So thank you for your time. 2021 Farmer's Market, very much looking forward to it. Very much looking forward to getting back with the community. And I do appreciate any and all help that you guys can assist us with. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Zasha Kademi. If you can give us your name and spell it and your address for the record, please.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Zasha Kademi and my first name is spelled Z A S A H. And my last name is spelled K H A D E M I. And I live at Ford Dawes Avenue in West Orange. Okay, well, I was very happy to hear Ms. McCartney say that. First, let me go down as saying that I objected to this entire project, the premise of it, that it's that we, that it, that these wealthy developers need tax abatements and then I have to pick up the tab. But if it's going to be forced through, I'm going to respectfully ask and respectfully demand that we be very forward-thinking. And I was very grateful to hear Susan McCartney say that that's what we're going to do. But for me, I see myself as a stakeholder in this thing because I eventually I'm going to have to be paying for some of it. So so it's not good enough that it's just lead certified, but I understand there's four levels of lead certification. And West Orange should be, we must be forward-thinking because of the things that Susan Malanga and others stated. And I think that we should be going for platinum lead certification. And there's many advantages to that, including increased revenue for the developers who are already getting a tax break. So also, I wanted to bring up the library situation. I agree with others that, that it's in a very bad location. I understand that we need a new library. Yes, we do. But people can't access it. And that's a huge problem. And I agree that, that people have to, we have to be told how this jitney service is going to be paid for ahead of time. But I also want to bring up the fact that if we're going to have this new location of the library and, and put money into it to upgrade it and be an example, we need to follow other good examples like Morris County Library on Hanover Road and take up the Heat Island effect of all these parking lots that, that were stakeholders in by having solar paneling on the parking lots as well as charging stations to encourage the use of future patrons and residents to have electric vehicles. As you know, the president is, is going that way and the rest of us are going that way. We're gonna need to have places to charge our cars while we live and work and come to the library. So yeah, that's, that's what I wanted to ask. And also, Ms. McCartney, I really appreciate you saying that these are inclusions, but I would really like to hear about the specifications of how, how lead are we going to be, how environmentally sustainable, how forward-thinking are we going to be in this project that really a lot of residents were opposed to? Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, it's just listed as West Orange Town Council Meeting. And I'm going to have to promote you as a panelist and then I'll turn your camera off and then we'll go through this. So if we can just hold on one moment. Okay, just wait for them to come over. Okay. Still waiting. Still waiting. Sometimes on there and the computer, it takes a couple more seconds. Okay, so while that's going, we'll go to the next person. And if we can have Lawrence McAbee. Uh, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address and spell for the record, please.
Um, hey, it's Susan McAbee. Uh, the last name is M C A B E. And we're at number two, Mountain Way.
Thank you.
Um, so I just wanted to call about the library. I saw the library plans recently and then I saw the, the presentation again today. Um, a couple general comments about the current library. It, you know, it's okay, whatever, but you know, as a parent, especially when my kids were little and I wanted to take them more to the library. It was hard not, we could get to the library, we could drive to it. But finding parking at the library was very hard. So trying to, if you're talking about access, you know, the current location is not that great for most of West Orange. West Orange is a, is a much bigger town than we think of ourselves as. And getting in and out of that library and being able to park and actually spend time at the library was very hard. I know many of my other parent friends wouldn't even go to the West Orange Library because it was so small. And they would go to other nearby libraries because they had better programs and better space. Um, the plans for this new library look absolutely fantastic. It looks like it'll provide a lot of things that our community needs. I know it's not in the most walkable area, but you know, having a, uh, an auxiliary library at the, near the current location. And then the fact that it's so close to a shop right where a lot of people go and shop, you can go to the library, pick something up, go take your shopping and go home. I think that that's going to be a huge factor in the convenience of it. I think it's an awesome, awesome thing. I really love the plans. I think it'll be great when it's done. Um, on another subject, I am listening to all this talk about the HRC Council. I'm kind of appalled that they're talking about changing it so it's more independent and it doesn't get appointed by the mayor. I think the mayor's fine. I think the mayor appointing people is fine. I don't think he appoints jerks who feel like they have to follow every word he says because he's not that kind of guy. So I really think the HRC thing, it, it sounds like maybe that's not really where you should be focusing. Maybe you should be focusing on, um, on what people need to have us address to make sure we're a more equitable town. Um, so I, you know, whether the mayor appoints them or not, if they're focusing on the right thing, it'll be fine. So, thank you very much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Oh, I think I just asked you to unmute yourself. You could ignore that one. Okay, we're gonna try again, uh, with a label as West Orange Town Council Meeting. If, when the prompt comes on your screen, allow yourself to be moved to a panelist. Uh, this way, um, and then I'll bring you, uh, your camera off. There we go. Okay, I'm gonna stop the video here. And, okay, great. We can have your, uh, name and address for the record, please.
Rosary Morelli, M O R E L L I.
Thank you, and your address.
Ralph Road.
Okay, thank you. You're all set.
Okay, um, I think this moving of the library is going to have a negative effect on the residents of the Rent a House. Who currently and for years at their um, whim or whatever, or when they had the free time, they could just up and walk across lawn and go right to the library. In this case, they have all kind, seniors have all kinds of things they do all day. They go to doctors, they do therapy. They take medication. They can't be rigid and say, okay, the shuttle bus is leaving at this time. I have to be ready. And there are days where they just wanna go over and just sit and lounge or whatever. It's gonna be a little difficult if I understand the shuttle service. You're taking that luxury, if you wanna look at it that way, away from them. Um, it's difficult for them to get around physically and otherwise. Also arranging time so that they can only go when the shuttle bus goes, if I understand that that's what's going to happen. Um, I don't think that was taken into consideration. And I think we're going to be, uh, closing out the opportunity of the senior citizens, especially in the rent-a-building, by moving the, um, library up and to Essex Green. That's it.
Okay, thank you. And I'm gonna move you back over to a panelist, uh, excuse me, to a, um, attendee momentarily, while we take on the next person. Um, uh, okay, it's listed as Joy Church of God. If you can give us your name and address and spell your name for us.
Give us your name and address and spell your name for us, please.
Yeah, how you doing? My name is Doug Adams and, uh, A D A M S. Nine West Over Terrace.
Thank you.
There's a couple pieces that I would like to share during this time. The first is, um, I wanna thank the council and the mayor for their appointments to the mayor's program for the uniquely gifted. Um, I think we have a very exciting, uh, list of board members and I'm looking forward to getting our first meeting scheduled and setting our agenda for the year. As you know, uh, people, uh, very often adults with developmental disabilities and particularly in West Orange, many of their families are older and, uh, they don't have the mobility that, um, other families have. And we've lost the ability to have our monthly gatherings, but, uh, I think there are some exciting things that we uh, can do and are looking to do to expand the program. And with the help of the Garden State Church, Joy Church and other volunteers, uh, we've been able to provide them their holiday meal and celebrations through a system of delivery. So thank you for that. Uh, the second thing is, um, I, I really love the layout of the new library. Uh, being a grandfather, I understand, um, the importance of passing down the value of libraries to my grandchildren. And the reality is they live in a world that is so uniquely different than mine. I can go to the downtown library and I'm gonna be cool. I'll go find a book, I'll sit in the corner, I'll put, put my laptop up. And from what I understand, there still will be a library there for the seniors at Rent a House to get to. But to go up the hill and, and some of the work that I do with people with disabilities, we have meetings and sessions in libraries all throughout the state of New Jersey. And I just have to tell you, we are so very behind in our facilities. And so it's just really exciting to see what's planned. Um, I think that, um, in many places, because New Jersey is landlocked and challenged, many places, new libraries are being built where they're a little bit off the beaten path, uh, to get to. So I think the jitney service is a great, uh, way to try and accommodate residents to get there. Uh, but ultimately, and I think what's very important is to understand that we have another generation coming behind us and they have higher expectations as to what their experience is gonna be in West Orange. And so I love the way that they are looking at this um, and looking at our future in a more positive way. And then finally, uh, I also had the honor and the privilege to be on the, uh, HRC Ordinance Task Force. And I had the honor and privilege of being, uh, a former chairperson. And so, uh, I am not one who easily takes offense, but if I were, I might be a little bit offended by the idea that people volunteer their time to be somebody else's puppet. I, uh, appreciate the mayor. I think he's doing a fine job. But I actually have an accountability that goes beyond the mayor. I have family and friends and, and parishioners who live in West Orange who expect me to represent uh, my integrity, uh, and not someone else's integrity. I found the HRC, when I joined it, to be absolutely the biggest battle was to keep it from becoming an adversarial tool for a political rancor and to keep the conversation focused on the needs of the people. I think the ideal of the, the HRC becoming an autonomous body is not only dangerous, but a political power grab. I believe that the HRC is designed to serve the mayor and the council. The town council has the right to appoint people who are on that commission. And the commissioners and the chairperson, our job is to connect to the community in a way that everyone has a voice at the table and that their voice has access to direct leadership on the town council and in the mayor's office. It's not to grab whatever the col- cultural or political conversations or narratives are to pick their own agendas. It is to represent the re- the residents in West Orange. And I think that the town council should table this conversation until you can have a direct conversation with your appointees about what it means for them to represent the town and to be your aide in making sure you hear voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Um, next, um, we have Lawrence McAbee. Again, I just wanna make sure that it's just not the same person. Maybe it is Lawrence this time, if you can follow the prompt. Oh, you took away your hand. Okay, just wanna make sure. Uh, next is a phone call, um, patron, and I'm gonna push the button. It's the last numbers of four nine three three. You'll notice a prompt on your screen. If you can unmute yourself and give us your name and address for the record, please. One more time, you may hear the unmute prompt on your phone. Four nine three three. Okay, I'm going to move on to the next person. And that is Greg Boyle. Uh, Greg, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Greg Boyle, fifty-seven Benvenu Avenue. And I am the senior pastor of Unconditional Love Christian Fellowship in town. Uh, some of the council know me. I served on the police department here for over twenty-five years. Um, it was great to hear some talk this evening about the history of a tree and concerns for animals and the good debate over the library. I think it's healthy. I think it's good. Um, I came to speak about probably even a more important issue and what should even be closer to our heart, and that is our children. And to that effect, I can say with a high degree of certainty that the majority of the, of the township council, the mayor, leaders of departments, et cetera, profess belief in Jesus Christ. And it is to our God, the God of the Bible, the God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, that we declare to be under in our national pledge. I would also believe that it is that same God that we speak of, that is the God that you swore an oath to when you were sworn into your office. And I hope that you would agree that God cannot lie. I also hope, especially for Christians, that you would remember that immediately after his baptism, Jesus went out into the wilderness to be tempted of the devil forty days. I'm sure if asked, you would know that Jesus rebuked the lies and resisted the temptations by citing the word of God. I am representative of the Lord and what I say is from the word of God. You know, it used to be an accepted practice that ministers took to the town square and brought, thus saith the Lord, to the town. During these very challenging times, I believe that it is imperative that the local pastor speak to the issues of morality that affect our lives, especially our children's. I've read several, from several sources, that Governor Murphy and the New Jersey Department of Education has implemented a curriculum of second, of sex education, including teaching on sexual acts that I'm not even comfortable with reciting here. I've read that five-year-olds are supposed to be introduced to sex ed, including gender identity matters. The new Biden administration has wasted no time jumping in and making public education a place where biological boys can play sports with girls and have use of either non-gender-specific or opposite gender private spaces. I pray this is not so. And the new gender-neutral language is rooted in a lie. The very first lie. God surely didn't say was the first lie that the devil told Eve. God says that he created mankind, both male and female, in his image. There are only XX and XY. It is immoral to lie to our children, especially on issues that directly impact their welfare and their developing worldview. The use of shared space and sports between opposite gender is a serious capitulation. One that is against the natural order and one, and the word of God. The long-term impact, I promise, will be harmful. With all of that said, we must love the oppressed young person that struggles with reality and point them to God for help. Parents know that children are God's inheritance and our blessing. We will be judged on how we raise them. And I plan on pressing this matter in truth and love with the Board of Education. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next we have Alexandra Mizrahi. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and spell your name for the record and your address, please.
Thank you, Alice Mizrahi, M I Z R A H I, thirty-five Watchon Avenue. Uh, I'm a human relations commissioner since two thousand and sixteen when I was asked by Councilwoman Susan McCartney to serve our community as her appointee. It has been an honor to serve West Orange on her behalf and receiving through all these years unconditional support from Councilwoman Susan McCartney on my duties. My fellow commissioners, who I respect and highly value their commitment, expertise and their love for West Orange and I, including some commissioners that are no longer at this moment with us, worked very hard on the ordinance changes through the summer. I am not only support, but I stand by it and will appreciate the support of the council and continue serving our community with absolutely no intention to do it to go against the mayor as he was recently stayed, which it feels very wrong, some of the statement that has been made. So we are not absolutely with intention to do it to go against the mayor of Parisi, but be accountable to our council, the person who has appointed each one of us with a liaison. So I think that the, some of the comments here are taking another view and it's been a little disrespectful to the amount of hours that we have put through, especially for, for some of us who have been from the beginning, giving our voluntary time in serving the community. So I would like, appreciate it that some of the tone, comments and names are reduced on level and being a little more respectful. And if you may agree or disagree with what we have said or what we believe and why we stand for, that's another thing, but don't put words that we have not put, one, and two, don't call out making comments that, in my opinion, as I know, in a feel, feel for the other commissioners, they may feel offended at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ash. Um, this is a last call before we get to Mr. Puglisi. If anyone else would like to raise their hand for public comment, they can do so now, pardon. Joyce, if you can, uh, follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. This is Joyce Rudin, thirty-eight Woodland Avenue.
Thank you.
I, uh, would like to request that Resolution number twenty-one dash oh one regarding executive And I would like to request that Resolution number twenty-one dash oh one regarding Executive Drive and Rooney Circle be pulled from your agenda tonight. This plan is not consistent with the Town Ordinance two, four, four, eight, which was, which incorporated a sustainability checklist. The ordinance was signed by Jerry Guarino when he was council president and the mayor in two thousand and fifteen. I attended the special planning board meeting, which was inconveniently held on the night of the inauguration. This is what I heard. Until our Green West Orange members raised questions about the lack of sustainability issues in the revised plan for Executive Drive, there was no discussion on whether or not these buildings had green measures incorporated into them. When the issue was raised, Ms. McCartney and Mr. Klein did jump in and assert that they do want to have more green input into the building plans. However, the discussion boiled down to two words. Ms. Grill's plan said that the environmentally progressive installations that could be used within the building were suggested. Mr. Klein argued that the, that the lead certification and other green methods should be required. In the end, the word required was removed, and an add-on letter that would be written by Mr. McPherson would be attached to this plan. This is a letter that the public has not seen. In fact, none of you in the council have seen this letter either. So to pass this resolution tonight without fully knowing whether or not the green measures that we would like to incorporate in the town and that should be incorporated according to your own sustainability checklist are incorporated or not is, is in question. The ordinance should be pulled. The other issue in this, in this ordinance is that it has no plan. People are talking as if there really is a plan for a jitney to take riders from somewhere in West Orange to this hidden location behind Essex Green to go to the new library. I was there today. It is quite off the beaten path. Um, and I was also at the Public Library today, which was well-attended by the community and serving the most, the residents who need it the most, the seniors and the thousands of residents who live within walking distance of the, of the community. Within the plan that Susan Grill proposed, it does not define for sure whether there is a jitney and if, in fact, there is a jitney, who is responsible to pay for it. What I heard at the planning board meeting was the chairman arguing against incorporating green measures and allowing the uncertainty of who will pay for the jitney plan to go forward because he was most concerned about the impact on the developer. We, as a community, should be worried about other things other than the developers' costs. So in conclusion, I'm asking that you pull Resolution number twenty-one dash oh one until you have the full information about what and how the sustainability checklist will be followed. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Michael Pages. If you can follow the prompt on the screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, everyone. This is Michael Pages on Ferris Drive. I hope everyone and their families are well. As a quick update, just wanted to check in on, as I'm sure you all know, Crestmont and any conversations that are happening there, in particular, vis a vis the appraisals that might be going on, how that process is going and where it stands. We haven't heard an update from the mayor at all in a few months now. So, you know, if there are conversations, it'd be helpful for us to know what's appropriate. And then obviously, in terms of that last conversation, there was nothing in front of the committees for review. So just checking in. A second minor unrelated point, because I hadn't heard anybody to the contrary, as it relates to sex ed, the sex ed commentary, and I don't want to certainly speak out of turn here, but there's a lot of literature on how sex education can impact young people. Obviously, there are many views to this, and it is important that people have a diverse, informed opinion on it. But certainly, helping our young people navigate life with more education rather than less is typically a good way to go. And I think most people would, maybe fifty-one percent, but most people would rather go down that path. So just wanted to get that on the record as another point of view as it relates to that rather polemical topic. So I hope everyone's well. Thank you, and I look forward to hearing back.
Thank you. And the person has the Zoom listed as RM. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Um, hi, my name is Robin Miller. I live on Forest Hill Road. I have a question regarding Resolution twenty dash twenty-one regarding the community development block grants. On the priority list, number three, Joy of God Church at four forty-six Northfield Avenue, sixty thousand dollar grant. I'm just curious, what was the, uh, what is the details regarding this rehabilitation? I know that this is formerly a structure that was a commercial structure that was recently purchased by this congregation, and I just want to know the details regarding their, uh, getting a community development block grant. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Mr. Puglisi, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, Anthony Puglisi. That's P-U-G-L-I-S-I, representing County Executive Joe DiFincenzo. I'm sorry I missed the last couple of meetings. We've been in the process of getting the Essex County Vaccination Program up and running. So I had to miss a couple of your meetings because of that. So I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year and hopefully twenty twenty-one will be better than last year. Uh, just some other things that are going on in the county. Uh, just this week, we announced, uh, we're accepting essays from senior citizens in our senior legacy writing contest. This is something that's been going on for the last at least nineteen, twenty years. Uh, we ask seniors to share their memories. It kind of becomes a written history in some cases. Uh, it's always a great event. We had to, obviously, it was done remotely this year because of the pandemic, but it's great to hear the stories and great to see how times in Essex County have changed and what events and what people have influenced others' lives. Uh, so the deadline for that is April fifth. Um, and information about that program is on our website, which is EssexCountyNJ.org. Uh, as always, we have our, we're continuing the free testing program for Essex County residents. Tuesdays, we're in Newark. Thursdays, we're in Cedar Grove, the Public Works complex. And Saturdays, we're at the commuter parking deck in front of Turtleback Zoo in West Orange. Uh, we also continue doing the food distribution events. Uh, this week, we're in Irvington, right next to Irvington High School. Those continue every Thursday at locations around the county. Uh, and finally, the vaccination program itself, to date, we've given vaccines to about thirty thousand Essex residents and/or people who work in Essex or attend school in Essex County. We've also started providing second doses. Uh, we do, uh, we were given the Moderna vaccine, and again, to date, we've given about two thousand second doses. Obviously, the, the demand for the vaccine far outstrips the number of vaccines that we get. Uh, we have, the county executive has been in constant communication with the governor, who has been very supportive of our efforts. Uh, and those efforts also include a lot of help from municipalities, including West Orange, because something of this magnitude we couldn't do ourselves. Um, and really, the, the issue with vaccines, as we all know, is more of a federal issue than, than a state or county issue. Our county executive estimates that if we had enough doses, we probably could do about thirty to thirty-five thousand vaccines a week. And hopefully, in the coming weeks, with some promises that we've heard from the federal government, we'll be able to get vaccines that would get us up to that level and get more shots in the arms more quickly. That's all I have, if anyone has any questions.
Thank you. And that is all for public comment, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone who participated in this evening's public comment. I, I want to first start off with the Crestmont, Mr. Trank or Mr. Gross. Are there any updates that we can provide the public with respect to the status of the appraisals?
Um, my understanding is they're in progress. I have not received them yet. I'll yield to Mr. Sayers and Mr. Gross if they have a keener update on that.
Uh, we're right where you are, same place.
I'll follow up tomorrow to get a projected timeline on that.
Wonderful. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so very much. I, I want to start off by just saying that the comments on Executive Drive, that is on the council agenda, and we will be, I know that that is an ordinance, and typically, we don't have discussion during first ordinance, but I think that there is, there has been some expression by council members that may want to have that discussion. So I'm going to save that discussion for when it comes up on our agenda. Animal shelter, I know we were going to discuss during new business, but I will say that all of our council colleagues have had an opportunity to have conversations amongst each other and with those who have advocated. There are a lot of moving pieces and parts to how we move forward. Everything is tied up to the actual move, but I do want to provide an opportunity for my council colleagues to discuss the current state of the control facility and how we move forward. Um, that is planned for new business after our council agenda. And with respect to the library, that plan is tied up with Executive Drive Plan. Obviously, there are a lot of diverse opinions, even amongst the council members, which will be a part of this evening's discussion as well. I, I do want to, with respect to the HRC comments, I, I do want to clarify. I was on that Zoom call with the Human Relations Commission. I did not find anyone to say anything derogatory or offensive about any chair, past, or present. I do know that the commissioners have been working hard for the last six or seven months to make these changes so that they can be more effective in representing the voices of the community. I have to say, and I will always continue to say, that the reason I ran was because I felt that there was no representation. I have discussed this with the mayor. I support the HRC Commissioner's willingness to have some autonomy and look forward to that discussion as well a little later. Um, but just wanted to clarify that I did not hear anyone say anything disparaging about any of my council colleagues on that HRC call, which was a Zoom call with commissioners on there. Uh, with respect to the comment regarding the sexuality and gender identity, I just have to call it out to say that that is very hateful and despicable rhetoric, and certainly not something that I support. I think we are a community in West Orange that is diverse in every aspect, and we are accepting of every resident. I am very, I'm very sorry that we had to be subjected to that, to each their own opinion. However, in this public forum, I am going to call it out because you cannot come here and, and spread hate. Um, that, those are the comments that I have in response to the public. I don't know if, if any of my council colleagues want to add anything to that. Councilwoman Catalina, I saw your hand up.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, lots to unpack. We are going to have conversations, so I'm only going to touch on, on a few things. You know, Pastor, uh, well, I've known you for a long time. I, I know you just made a passionate statement about the, agree with my colleague, I was a little disappointed, very hateful. Tone, I know, but very, knowing you so long, you, I know you have your own concerns and everyone's entitled to their opinion. So just, just disappointed because it did sound very, very hateful. Um, in regards to conversations about jitney service, and we're going to talk about this later, just so folks know, we have a very vibrant jitney service that is already in effect, and that where we are is already paid for by the town. Uh, our, our senior services department, along with our health director, has worked with our grant writer to apply for a new bus from New Jersey Transit and with Mr., under Mr. LaFors guidance. So, um, you know, and, and that's how we try to purchase these items too with, with grants. So we're hoping to get another jitney bus in, in service through the grant, and we look forward to that. The ordinances, you know, they're, they're not consistent, so we, we do need to have this conversation, so I'm looking forward to that later. Because some of the, some of the ordinance, um, they, they have to get consistent with, with each other when it comes to the, these liaison appointments. I think we should have the liaison appointments, I think, to help with consistency and just looking at them now, we have a few on tonight. And, uh, you know, that's just because these, these committees come on at different times when they're decided, and in the future, any, with legal, any other future committees that we do, we really need to tighten this up to make sure they're all consistent with each other. In regards to supporting the library, the last time, I was very supportive of that move. Marge and Jerry Sweetie, Anthony, Dave, you did a phenomenal job with this plan. Uh, it's very collegiate-looking. I don't agree with a few of the speakers tonight, although I do appreciate their opinion. I think it's a very good central location. Um, I also think it will help the Essex Green Shopping Plaza. It's a very, you know, bring, bringing parents there and community members. So I've, I've been supportive of it, plus with the senior, with the last plan, with the senior building. We're going to have a new senior building rather at the current library site, if all, if all goes well. So bring in sixty-five affordable housing units there, and bless you, whoever's needs.
Thank you.
So, um, you know, that's important. That's another add-on that will help our senior community, plus the seventy-five hundred square feet of community space, which will accommodate all the residents in the Rent a House and, and folks in that neighborhood. So, um, again, it's a great project, very thoughtful, uh, grant writing, three point five million dollars in, in grants to, for renovations. And, um, again, we'll, we'll be talking a little more detail later with that. So there's a lot of boxes that were checked there as far as the plan itself. Um, I hope Councilwoman McCartney, Council President, can maybe give us an overview when we have that discussion with the resolution to get a little bit more detail. So, um, other than Mr. Fagan, you know, always a treat. Uh, our Eagle Scout program just thrives here. It's great to see what, what they do for us. And I appreciate all the county self with the vaccinations that's going well. And just trying to make sure. Oh, Rob Reese, so excited with the farmer's market coming. We had a promo meeting with the Downtown Alliance the other night, and you were on our list to help you get promotion, and we will work with the PR Commission. So we look forward to another great season with the West Orange Farmer's Market and appreciate all your work there. So with that being said, I will defer to my colleagues, but thank all the speakers for coming out tonight. Everyone's passionate. And you, I appreciate your advocacy to the community, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilwoman Casselino. Councilman Rutherford, I saw your hand up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President, for acknowledging me, and thank you to all the speakers that were here tonight. Because we are going to have some conversation about some of these issues later on in the meeting, I will address some of them briefly now. Ms. Malanga, I do agree that a seat at the table is needed, and we need to use it effectively to make the project better. And I think if we are going to go forward with anything like that, we should look at ways to use our leverage to help meet the needs of residents. I was glad to hear some conversation on both sides of the issue with regard to the HRC. I think that will be fully fleshed out later on. With regard to the Mr. Litvinoff, I hope I pronounced your name correctly. I apologize if I did not. He spoke about the jitney, and I know we're going to talk about that, but just one, one point was brought up in my council colleague's comments. Councilwoman Michelle Casselino, she pointed out that the jitneys are purchased with grants, and and that's the approach we're going to take. I know we'll have a fully, we'll have a full discussion on that later. But the operating expenses, unless I'm wrong, and I very well could be, are not taken care of by grants, and that is something that we should be considering as well. Want to thank the folks from the library who put together the presentation. I think all of us are in agreement that we need a new library. Some of us disagree on how we get there. I want to thank, I think it was Susan McAbey, for advocating on behalf of the residents of West Orange who currently need to drive to the library. I think their needs need to be considered as well. We recognize that there are some parking issues there, and our ultimate outcome should take that into consideration as well. I do have to say something with regard to Pastor Greg Boyle's comments. I know that they were taken as hateful. It is in moments like this, when people are speaking off the cuff or have a limited amount of time to address a concern, some of the nuance of their position make it, may not be communicated effectively. So I'm not going to say that it was hateful, and I understand how people took it that way. I will say that it is misguided, and as a pastor, I think it's important that we understand the separation between these two spaces. In church, we teach one thing, we we teach to a standard that everyone strives toward, and we hope that people live up to that. In government, we have to make sure that we represent the needs of everyone, and that is our job here. Whether someone in the community agrees with a particular choice or lifestyle or even the natural condition of an individual, whether you doubt that that is their natural condition. For us as governors, we have to be concerned with their rights too. And so I I do think it's important that we live up to the mantra that we have as a stigma-free town and be inclusive of everyone and look to make sure that everyone is supported and protected. Ms. Robin Miller asked some questions with regard to the Joy of God Church Grant. I I know we're going to discuss that in detail, so I'm happy to to go into details later. I will say that I think it's important that government be aware of the organizations in town that are meeting needs that government does not meet as well or reaches communities that are harder for government to reach. And we should be supportive of organizations in town, especially churches of any particular faith that are looking to meet the needs of underserved, underrepresented, or overlooked populations. And I don't have any updates on Crestmont, so I can't say anything there. That does it for me. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Councilwoman McCartney, I saw your hand up.
Thank you. Council President, let me start with by saying that thank you for putting the Animal Control Center on pending matters, our new business, because I was going to ask you to do that so we can get more information on that. I'm just sifting through my notes. Most of them were on the Executive Drive in the library. I wanted to explain to Mr. Litvinoff that when he was talking about redeveloping the library at forty-six Mount Pleasant Avenue, that was already designated as an area need of redevelopment. Mr. Sweeney alluded to that. So there is already a plan in there to, for that building to have sixty-one affordable units, senior units on top of that building and to set aside seventy-five hundred square feet of community space for a library annex. So we are very conscious of the residents in that area and and want to accommodate both the seniors and residents that want to use that building. I wanted to also say that Mr. Darren Tobia and Ms. Kadima Joyce Rudin, there must have been about thirty-five other people that sent us an email about Executive Drive. I responded to every one, but they all kicked back because they use that everyactionadvocacy.com. So I did have a copy of the sustainability plan attached to the emails, and unfortunately, they all bounced back. I appreciate Mr. Tobias talking about the native plants because we're also very conscious of that, and we get reports from the forester. So thank you for bringing those things up. And the jitney service is on page nineteen about expanding and using the service at Executive Drive. The HRC, I know that's going to be another ordinance. I appreciate all the comments made there. What I have pulled all of our ordinances, and I see the consistencies in all of them. And I think now that we have three on the agenda, we need to look at all of them to to make them more consistent. Some just now don't make sense. Rosary also mentioned about the residents at the Rent a House, and, you know, I just wanted to repeat that there is community space and seventy-five hundred square feet of community of library annex in that redevelopment plan at the library. I appreciate Doug Adams' comments on the mayor's program. I'm sure that that has been stifled stifled to some extent due to COVID. But I know that we continue to get letters and updates on it. And I was not prepared to speak to Greg Boyle. He and I don't usually see eye to eye. We haven't in the past. But what immediately came to mind to me was Nelson Mandela quote, "Education is the most powerful weapon in which we can use to change the world." So I think education is very important to protect every individual. Alex, I wanted to say thank you to Alex since two thousand and six, and so long ago. I want I want to say I hope Puppy is doing well. I know her son has just had surgery and just been communicating and and sending best wishes to him for a speedy recovery. And again, being consistent with these ordinances. Still no update on Crestmont. And I wanted to ask Anthony Pagliisi, I missed him in the office the other day when I called, about I know that the senior housing authority is, has vaccinated the residents in Newark, and I didn't know if there was a way, I'm sure you're working with the Health Department, but is there a way to come out to West Orange for our seniors here that may not be able to get to the Kmart Plaza, which I do want to say congratulations on that. Every report so far that between the workers and the volunteers and the police officers, that it is just an outstanding, efficient operation. So thank you for everything that you're doing during this pandemic. And I really do want to talk about the Executive Drive and all the comments, so I look forward to that ordinance.
Mr. Pagliisi was still on the call, if you needed him to answer a question. McCartney, I'm sorry.
Can I respond?
Oh. And it was real, I didn't know if the county could come out to the seniors here in West Orange, and if you are working with the Health Department to do such a thing.
Yes, so the, our Health Department is working with the health officers from all twenty-two municipalities. We are coming up with a plan where we would actually bring the vaccines to senior residences. First of all, that would alleviate some congestion at the at the sites and also make it more accessible for seniors to to get the vaccines. So at this point, I think we're in the information gathering phase. I know our Health Department has asked the West Orange Health Officer for some information about the buildings that are in located in West Orange so that we can see what kind of plan can be created to respond to each of those buildings, you know, on an individual basis and 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 get there on site.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCartney. Councilwoman Williams, I see your hand up. And I, let me, let me just say, I apologize. I was just asking Lauren, how do I get everyone on my screen? Because I couldn't see everyone, but now I see you all, so I wasn't. Now I can see you, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you very much, Council President. I wanted to thank all of the participants who came forward this evening to voice their concerns about our township. I also want to put on public record and thank those who emailed us directly, me directly, regarding their concerns as well. If I have not had an opportunity to respond to you directly, certainly I will do so. Just wanted to address a few of the items. Several of them will be on the agenda, and several of my council colleagues have already made commentary. So what I would like to address as the immediate past Chairwoman of the Human Relations Commission would be some of the information that I am identifying as incorrect. First of all, let me clarify that as your Chairwoman, outgoing Chairwoman of the HRC, we do have minutes for every meeting that we have had. And while we did have a presentation of some bylaws that were penned by one of our members, we also identified that there was a process that the commission would need to go through to identify any changes since the Black Lives Matter rally occurred in June of 2020 in West Orange. What we identified was that we needed to have a task force to address some of the concerns of our residents. And with that, we also identified that a task force would review the bylaws as part of that mission. While we did present bylaws to the group, we identified again that a task force would review that. At no point was the task force ever given the charge to review the bylaws. Task force began meeting in December, and they were never presented with the bylaws. So I'm not certain what part of the commission reviewed the bylaws. I certainly was not a part of that review, and I have attended every meeting since my appointment in 2016. So I'm, again, that's just a little bit concerning, the information that was communicated here this evening. Also wanted to address the library, which has been repeated earlier this evening, which is that we do intend on keeping a satellite location at Mount Pleasant. And so, you know, I I do believe that while we talk about the library being tucked away at Executive Drive, I just want to remind everyone that ShopRite is not tucked away. It is busy. People go there constantly for their shopping. And so, you know, if if we don't have problems with people doing their grocery shopping at that facility, you know, I'm not certain why it would be too much of a challenge to just go behind that building and enter into our library. Often, I've been in libraries that in different municipalities are in different locations. And certainly with a community of forty-seven thousand-plus residents, we should have more than just one library location. It would not be inappropriate for us to have a main updated, state-of-the-art facility as well as a satellite location that we currently can can facilitate and use. The rest of the comments, we will and do have on our agenda, so I don't want to take up too much more of our evening. I do want to thank our Township Historian and Public Information Officer Joe Fagan, always for his historical information. And salute to the Eagle Scout who did achieve that status. Thank you so very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. And so this concludes our public comment portion. And Madam Clerk?
Ms. Carneval, I'm sorry, you're muted. It's okay.
Thank you. Sorry. That's all the time.
Approval of minutes of previous meeting, public meeting, January fifth, 2021. Report of Township Officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids. Planning Board Resolution twenty-one dash oh one recommending that the Township Council adopt the Executive Drive Rooney Circle non-condemnation redevelopment plan for Block one fifty-five, Lot forty point oh two, Block one fifty-five, Lot forty-two oh two, and Block one fifty-five, Lot forty-one oh two.
Consent.
Bills, are there any? Oh, there are no bills, sorry. Resolutions, Council President?
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions on some resolutions, and I am going to pull, and then I'll ask my colleagues what they would like pulled. So I'll start with the pulling of the resolutions, if that's okay, Madam Clerk. Resolution twenty-two, twenty-one.
You remuted yourself.
Yes, thank you, sorry.
Twenty-two, one, Resolution twenty-one, twenty-one. And then I had a couple of questions on a few others. Did my council colleagues have any resolutions in addition to those two that they wanted pulled?
Can you repeat those? You did twenty and twenty-one dash twenty-one, those two, and which?
Yes.
Yes.
Just those two?
Yes, when I pulled in twenty-two, twenty-one, 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 I'm sorry.
Okay, just give me one second.
Sure.
Sixteen, twenty-one, I'd like to pull, if that's okay?
Okay. Is anyone else pulling any resolutions this evening?
Councilwoman Williams, I see your mouth moving.
I didn't have anything I wanted to pull, but I did have a couple of questions regarding twenty-three, twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-one, and twenty-seven, twenty-one.
Okay. All right, so let's start. Let's let's answer the questions first, and then we'll approve the consent agenda, if that's okay.
Yes.
Okay. And we'll go in order. My my first question was to the fourteen, Resolution fourteen, twenty-one. This is for Mr. Gross with respect to the contract for the community grants, planning and housing for administrative agent services. Is this in addition to what we have currently existing, or is this a new agent because of the additional affordable housing settlement that we just had with the court?
I'm sorry, hold on just a second.
Yeah.
I think it's yes, but I just want to look at the.
Yeah, Council President, you're, I can, you're absolutely correct, Council President. It's a result of implementing the fair share housing settlement.
Thank you. And just wanted to point out for just the general public, item K, which is Resolution nineteen, twenty, there is a resolution regarding the deferral of assessment of the six percent penalty for unpaid real estate taxes for 2020. So that is also here for on our agenda. Councilwoman Williams, you said you had a question with respect to twenty-three?
I do. For, I just wanted to ask, is this a budgeted amount for, I'm sorry, twenty-three, twenty-one? Was this a budgeted amount? This is on top of the eighteen.
Councilwoman Williams, is that question for Mr. Gross?
Whoever can answer that question.
I think he's looking at his screen right now and is on mute.
Oh. Yeah, he's not on mute. He's there.
Yeah, he's not on mute. He's there.
Yes, this is being funded out of capital, and it is budgeted.
Thank you. And the same question for 2521?
2521, yes, it is all budgeted. Almost by, and I shouldn't say almost, by definition, if a resolution is placed on the agenda, it's already been cleared that there's there are funds available for it.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Castellino.
If you don't mind, just because we're on 2521, I did have a comment, and I, Mr. Gross, if you could add, I think it's important to know that the pricing on this has dropped significantly since this was first thought of with this system. So I think that's beneficial to our capital budget.
I'm happy to comment on that. When we first started looking to replace our radio system, which has been long overdue, but because of the expense of it, we had been holding off, partly because we couldn't have, didn't feel that we could justify the expense, even though it was about $3.3 million. And able to get that done. We're also looking for savings, potential savings for the system, both through advances in technology that we were hoping to come and changing our processes and our utilization of the equipment. We were able to do both. What you see here is Phase 1 of what was a $3.3 million effort. And we think this is going to come in somewhere now around $1.8 to $1.9 million. So that's a significant drop. And really, I want to thank our staff for thinking outside of the box and the police department and otherwise. And also, just to point out an example where we went out, we spent about $10,000 on a study to bring in a professional to give us guidance. And when the professional, we asked the professional the tough questions, they gave us the right answers. So we're all pleased about this. And like I said, I think this is a big win for the township. We're going to have state-of-the-art equipment, and we're going to be using, instead of, in many, in many cases, instead of radios, handheld radios that cost, you know, $4,000 to $7,000 apiece, we'll be using cell phones and other technology that meets the needs of the day in a lot of cases. So certainly, we're not, you know, we're going to continue to have a need for radios, but we've limited, we've limited that usage. So thanks to everybody involved in this project.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Castellino, I didn't see you weren't done.
Not a question, but a statement on the last item on the agenda. You know, congratulations to Ms. Reynolds on being our temporary qualified purchasing agent. And we will be, and a special congratulations to Anderson. DeSantis, our longtime purchasing agent on her retirement coming due. So just want to thank you, thank her for all her years of hard work and service to our community and for all she's done for us. So good luck.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Castellino.
Administration, that goes tenfold. And we're, you know, we're sad to see Anne go, but we're happy that she's moved into her retirement phase of her life and wish her all the luck. And we'll stay in touch with her. And as far as Paula is concerned, this is one of the more gratifying appointments that in my tenure here that I've seen, and I'm so happy for her. I will point out that she's been waiting to take her final exam, has been rescheduled three times. And it's now been scheduled for February, mid, mid to end February. So let's hope this time it's.
It don't unfold again.
So.
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. I made the same note on Resolution 2721 to say congratulations to Paula. John, that was very generous of you to the comments that you made for Paula. And I also wanted to wish Anne a happy birthday and just best wishes in her retirement, too. And a grateful thank you for all the work that she has done. The Resolution 20, I did have a question on Resolution 2621, going backwards here, about the janitorial services. There is so much talk about the animal shelter. Does that, do the janitorial services include that building as well? And if not, can it?
I do not believe that it does. We certainly can't do that to see to an extent their services would help in that situation. But we'll certainly.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford?
Yes, just a couple of questions and a comment. I will echo the sentiments of my colleagues on 2721. Congratulations to our retiree. But the question is, do we acknowledge our retirees? And if so, how so? And if not, can we begin to do something to acknowledge those folks that have spent so much time, you know, serving the community?
Before COVID, we always had retirement parties that we were invited to. That was pre-COVID. But I know that the past couple of months, there have been a few retirees. And, you know, it feels like they disappeared. And I think, you know, we should, we could or should do something.
Some of us have been having discussions about what to do about this topic after we get to go ahead to, you know, come back together again in a group setting. I will tell you that there are, there's no parties or anything like that, but there are, there are good wishes cards and gifts, donations that are occurring for these people. So it is not going away unrecognized. But I agree with you. I think, you know, afterwards, we, you know, everybody's going to be looking for a big party at some point in time. And I'm not saying it's going to be at my house, but.
I thought you were volunteering.
We can have it at your house if you want to volunteer.
Well, if you want to wait till summer, that could be done down the shore. But and it may very well be that timeframe. But I agree with you, and I do think that we'll be doing something, you know, once we get to go ahead to do something.
Good on you. It's a no.
Also, on, I guess 1421 and a similar question on 2321, 2421. I'm just curious, do we include in our evaluation process of who gets awarded contracts anything regarding representation and ownership or senior leadership in the organization by people of color or any other metric? Is that a formal part of our process? And do we provide any weighting to that for respondents?
We follow state public contracting law. And in, within that, for instance, you know, we do a lot of state contracts, co-ops. So in those situations, they're in charge of the vetting of that. I do not know. I suspect the state may do it. I don't know if the co-ops do. At our level, our contracts are basically reflection, most of the time reflects to them those. In bid contracts, it's price. And I'll defer to Mr. Tranke to what extent there may be some references in our bid contracts. Just not sure. And of course, on a day-to-day basis, you know, our rules say unless we're doing competitive contracting, price is king, and it's all about getting the best price that we can. So Mr. Tranke, I don't know if you can, if you can comment on our bid contracts. I'm just not.
Well, the local public contracts law obviously governs any type of public bidding. So that does not provide an ability to evaluate what was responsible bidder based upon any factors outside the law. Having said that, the Council President has begun a discussion with some of us in the administration. And I do believe that that's something she wants us to further consider with regard to. I'll yield to the Council President. But again, I know we've spoken, and we've tried to be creative to get to that goal without violating the local public contracts law.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tranke. And to my council colleagues, we have started that conversation. Obviously, it's just the beginning of a conversation, something that we all should be included in and something I want to move forward in doing. I know that one of the conversations we had was with respect to who we award contracts to and how we award those contracts within the confines of the law. We have discussed a possible survey to our current vendors with respect to any implicit bias training that they also may offer to their employees in order to encourage them, if they have not done so, to do so. Obviously, it would just be a weighted score, not able to award anyone specifically for that. But it is a conversation that the administration is having. So we'd love to continue that conversation, perhaps under a conference agenda for our next meeting. We can come back with some ideas and have further discussion on that. But thank you, Mr. Councilman Rutherford. It certainly is something that is on the administrative radar.
Thank you, Council President. I think if we're going to be serious about inclusion, you know, if we're dealing with systemic racism, and that's a real issue, we have to look at how we include, not just that diverse voices have been heard. Thank you.
Absolutely agreed, 100%. Do any of my other council colleagues have any other questions? Or can we do the consent agenda, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm all second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Councilman Rutherford pulled 1621, Resolution authorizing the appointment of the township's chief financial officer, John Gross, as the township's municipal housing liaison. Councilman?
You're on mute.
I'm sorry. I gave you the wrong statute, the wrong resolution. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to hear that, because they didn't ask before they appointed me to this.
I went to the bathroom, and that was it.
That was.
I'm sorry.
I have to, I have to make an ask for a motion and then a second and approve it.
I move that we correct the consent agenda to include the correct ordinances?
21, second.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. Hold on. Who did a second, please?
Susan Gordon.
Okay. Okay, so that's included on the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the agenda's corrected. Okay, Council President Mathieu Brown pulled 2021 Resolution.
Wait, before we move on, though, if Bill pulled that inadvertently, is there one that he did have a question on?
Okay, we have to ask legal, because we already approved everything on consent agenda.
I'm fine, thank you. It's been approved, but if Councilman Rutherford has a question, somebody will certainly try to answer it.
Of course. I pulled that one out.
She did. It was 21 that I was.
Oh, okay. That worked out well. Perfect. Okay, so Council, Council President pulled 20-21, Resolution authorizing the township to submit applications for the 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program with a priority list revised January 20, 2021.
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. I did pull this resolution because I have a concern. I did email Mr. Gross and Mr. Lepore with, looking for confirmation as to how or why did we get to the point of amending this priority list for a $60,000 rehabilitation for 446 Northfield Avenue? I know that these community block grants are awarded to organizations within specific communities that serve specific communities, if you will. My concern is that this was a recently purchased property on 446 Northfield Avenue as one of the, Public Speaker Ms. Miller mentioned. And it was purchased as a commercial property. And the rehabilitation, from my perspective, is that we are using tax resources to rehabilitate or convert a church. Now, I know and I agree with my council colleague, Mr. Councilman Rutherford, with respect to supporting those organizations in our community that provide services to our residents, such is the case with number two, Bethany Center for Champions. The Outreach at Risk Youth Program has been active for many, many years in our community. They are established, and they have been successful. They work with our schools, particularly Edison. And they've been so successful that the students don't even go to the Wachung substation to play basketball anymore because they are at Bethany. So I agree with Councilman Rutherford that we absolutely should support those organizations that are supporting our residences, residents. However, I have a serious concern when we're looking at a facility that's been recently purchased and we're looking to rehabilitate it at taxpayer's expense at $60,000. This isn't for, this isn't for an outreach program. This isn't, it doesn't look to me that it is specifically for that. Main Street Counseling Center, again, they are, you know, and they have been expanding their mental health outreach to our community members. So I understand the work that they do through the municipal alliance and understand that. But the $60,000 in rehabilitative allocation, I have serious concerns with. So I did not receive a response to my email inquiry with respect to what established programs, outreach programs, community service programs has this facility given to our residents?
Should I?
I thought Councilwoman Castellino's hand up first?
Yeah, unless Councilman has some insight on this, and he liked to speak first, that's fine.
All right.
No.
No, that's all right. You can, you can go. I'm happy to wait.
Okay, I just, okay. So I'm going to have to concur with Council President. You know, I've been a supporter, too, with the, you know, West Orange Community House with programming, Bethany Church as well. Also, I had a question with Mr. Lepore. I don't think the zoning has been approved yet for that site. So I don't know if it's premature for this grant. But again, you know, if it was a program that would serve a certain population, and that doesn't seem the case. But, you know, again, when we had this conversation at the last council meeting, I was a little surprised to see this here. And, you know, I talked to Mr. Lepore this morning. And, you know, I just feel that, you know, as far as the, I shouldn't say the need, because the establishment probably has the need. But as far as this, there isn't a program there. And I see Bethany Church serving the area and the designated, the designated area for which Mr. Lepore explained. So I just don't, at this point in time, you know, see how this qualifies.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. So, Council President, if you didn't pull it, I was going to pull it because I had the same concerns. This application has not been approved yet. It is still before the zoning board. And I would expect to, I would fully support it if I saw an agenda on the programming that we tend to support. So I was not, I was not ready to support this because I didn't, I didn't, I felt like it was not timely. And we just needed more information about what this, what the funding was going for. And we just needed more information about what this, what the funding was going for. I had, I expected it, I expected as a church to be fully operational and such a community center. But until that happens, you know, maybe the next go around, we see when the community development block grants come around again, and it is established and there is programming in place, that would be a better time to apply.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Rutherford?
Sure, this, this project was brought to my attention because of the issues that it faced with regard to ingress egress that were before the zoning board. So the zoning has not been approved. But in order for Joy of God Church to provide the programming they, they currently provide and are looking to provide in this new facility that has been shut down since COVID, they needed to comply with the code because they have people on the second floor that don't have the proper egress. They cannot perform their community service or their outreach or the work that they do mentoring young people, and they've been doing in town for years. So for, I mean, I, I'm new to the council, but I know Pastor Adams is not unfamiliar. I don't think to any of the council members here, he's probably the least familiar to me. But so they've been doing work with young people for years in West Orange, and they can't do that work in this new space without making some additional changes to their layout. So I was under the impression, as communicated to me, that this particular application had support, not just from council, but also others in town. I do believe that if we have a group in town that is reaching hard-to-reach people or underserved populations, they should receive some assistance. While this is not in a CDBG track, a census track that would normally qualify for CDBG funds, the recipients of the service are all economically disadvantaged or underrepresented in one way or another. And so that's what makes them able to qualify for the money. And since, you know, this grant money is available to them, their application is in, they should receive some support.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah, if I may, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to also reiterate that I'm very familiar with the programming that Pastor Adams and Joy Church of God does perform for the community. I have a longstanding relationship with him, have been involved in trying to support some of that programming in several different capacities, partnerships, et cetera, et cetera. And while I do agree again that this was a late submission, it is necessary, as we do anticipate sooner than later, of being able to return to some sort of normalcy after the COVID. We have vaccines roll out in place. We have our children back in school effective yesterday. And of course, the successibility of that, we're keeping our fingers crossed. But if things go well, we know that we are looking towards getting back to normal. And this establishment does serve a marginal part of our community. I do support them receiving a portion of the block grant. Once we get back to normalcy, they need to be able to serve those marginalized residents. And I know and I'm comfortable with them being included, know the lives that they have touched, the impact that they do contribute to this community and beyond. So I have no challenges with the late add. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
President, may I just say something?
Yes.
The administration supports this, this resolution for Pastor Adams. As Ms. Williams just said, they do so much work for this township. It's amazing to me the things that Pastor Adams does for this township and, and, and always does things positively. And, and they're just looking to, as Ms. Williams said, to do some, you know, something a little bit bigger. And we, I just want the council to understand that the administration supports this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Sayers. I did ask the administration for clarity on what programs they were because I am not familiar with the program. So I did seek clarification and did not receive any. Like I said, when I look at Bethany, I've seen their programs. I know they're after-school programs. I don't know what programs Joy Church of God provides to the community. I'm not, that's not to say that I don't know Pastor Adams is active in the community. That, that is for sure. I've seen him active in the community, active in commissions, you know, participates in a lot of the township activities that, that we hold. However, I wasn't provided with what those programs are. And I fear that we are getting ourselves or setting a precedent where there is no division between church and state. This, again, if it were for a program, I wouldn't have any reservations.
I can, I'm sorry.
I, I don't know of the existing programs. And when I asked for that clarity, I didn't receive them. And this is very clearly to be able to rehabilitate a building that was purchased for a church purpose recently.
I, I can't, I, I don't know all the programs that he's involved in. But one of the programs I can tell you is, is he works with the West, his organization works with the West Orange Police Department with at-risk children in programs. And any at-risk children, they deal with the West Orange Police Department. And Pastor Adams, his organization deals with that. That's one of the major things that they do for the township, and they do a very good job at that. So that's why, you know, that's one of the reasons I truly believe that we should pass this.
I think, I think that that's, that's wonderful. I also know that, you know, in that service, I could imagine that any one of the substations, particularly the one on Washington, are, would be available for that type of a service. I just don't see supporting $60,000 for rehabilitation.
I'm just, I just wanted you to be aware that the administration supports this, and we support this because we truly believe that Pastor Adams does, and his church does a lot of work for the township. And like I said, one of the major things is that they deal with the police department and handle the at-risk children. That's one of the major programs that they deal with, so I just want to let you make it aware.
I completely understand. Thank you. Councilman Rutherford, and I see Mayor Parisi has now joined us.
I, just two more quick points. One, I don't know that it's a fair comparison to look at Joy Church, Joy of God Church and Bethany. Bethany's grant is recurring. I believe they, they do come every year, and I'm not disparaging Bethany. I know they do great work. This is a one-time grant to make sure that the facility meets the code so that they can provide the service that is needed to be provided. And looking for alternative spaces like a police substation defeats the purpose with regard to the particular community Mr. Sayers just talked about. There are folks that, well, one, we're trying to, I won't say we. There are people that are interested in, and I'm not a part of Joy of God Church. So when I said "we," I'm thinking of it from my own pastoral role at Ebenezer Baptist Church and the work that I do. So my community service referees, and the young men and women that are in gangs that I work with, they don't want to go to the police department. They will not meet me at the police department. And they will not be honest with me in those spaces because they fear they're being listened to. So having a site away from those folks who are viewed so horribly and make it difficult to even turn some of those lives around, having a space away from there, helping them get to a place where they can interact in a whole, a healthy and whole way, you know, with police or with whoever the other authorities are, I think is needed. And I know that if that, that service is not provided, we will lose more kids. And, you know, we had an incident at the high school this summer, or well, this fall, that was horrendous at one of the football games there. And it is those kids that, those children that fit that demographic that need the help the most. And if you help one, and I know he helps way more than one, but if you help one, I think you've done your job and the cost, no matter what it is, honestly, to save a life is worth it. And last thing I'll say is, our budget does reflect who we are. We speak about, you know, diversity and inclusion in this town because we are such a diverse town. But then when it comes to acting on that, there's always a reason why we don't, or there has been too many reasons why we don't. And please, you guys, you know, I speak loosely, don't, I'm not trying to disparage anyone. So I don't want to go down that road. But when we talk about our budget and how we use our dollars, it should reflect our values. And I think one of the values that has been stated clearly tonight in both in public comment as well as amongst the conversation with our, our council colleagues is that we should, we should value, support, nurture every part of the community. And this is a part that gets overlooked. And I think they deserve the same support as the other parts of the community. Thank you for listening and for giving me the time.
Mayor Parisi?
Can you speak a little louder, Mayor?
All right, I didn't get on sooner, but thank you for giving me the opportunity. I understand where, where your concerns are and some of your colleagues. Perhaps we didn't do a good enough job of getting the council information as to why we support this. The block grant program has been used, you know, for many years, sometimes to address not only very specific, but also sometimes unique purposes. And we felt that this application of that program fit a unique purpose along the lines of, as Councilman Rutherford laid out. So we know it's not typical, and we don't see it necessarily as being on the same plane as Bethany. But we thought it was, was helping to provide important service to, to people in need, which is what the Community Development Block Grant Program was established. So if, if we fail to get the proper information to the council to justify that, then that's, that's our failing. It's all happened pretty fast. And we'll try to maybe get more of those ducks in order for the next go around of block grant money to revisit this issue. It's not always been real clear-cut where the township has allocated some of block grant money over the years. It's not always in the zone. It's not always on capital improvements. You know, there are some, there is some flexibility within the rules to, again, address what can be specific and unique circumstances. And we felt that this, that this addressed that. So we appreciate the council's consideration as always. You know, everything we do is up to council's consideration, and we'll do a better job next time we, we visit the subject to get you the information you need.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Greatly appreciate you joining us. Yeah, and I just want to lastly say, to your point, Councilman Rutherford, I 100% agree that our budget is our moral document for any municipality. And I do have to say that there, there are many opportunities for improvement, absolutely, to plug those holes and to expose any systemic racist policies that we may have. 100% agree with you in that regard. You know, Bethany is one of those churches that has benefited, and our students have benefited from as well. So I, I just wanted to share that I see through your same lens. We may not agree on everything through those lenses, but I completely agree with you. Madam Clerk, can we call for, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, I just want to echo those comments because, you know, Bethany Church, and I appreciate the mayor's comments, but like, you know, as far as duplicating any services, we have, they have done outstanding job with servicing our at-risk population. Not to say that, that, because I, I think of the world with the Pastor Adams as well for all that he does for the community. But just duplicating services and moving from the corridor, which I'm very protective of, it's hard for me to support. So I, you know, we, we support the community house through the years. We do believe in helping our at-risk population, and a lot of our actions show that. So I just wanted to share that with our, you know, with Councilman Rutherford as well. So thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Castellino. Madam Clerk, can you please talk?
Yes, is there a motion to approve 20-21?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
No.
Councilwoman McCartney?
It's a very difficult decision, having known Pastor Adams for so long. I just, I understand, I know his work on juvenile justice also. I just, I just, the timing just isn't right. That's how I, I'm going to vote no. And I say that I do want to see it come back after the approvals are received and after the programming is in place.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
No.
Resolution 21-21, resolution authorizing inter-local services agreement with the town of Dover regarding financial services. Council President, you pulled that.
Thank you, I did. And I had conversations with the mayor about this and also with Mr. Gross. I think early on, when, when there was an initial agreement with Dover, I raised the concern because I didn't feel that this was appropriate. But I did do my research, and it is not only appropriate, but it is permissible by statute. And I certainly support shared services agreements. I think it's a way to benefit both communities in savings on our budget. I will draw the line if it ever came to sharing the service of Madam Clerk. That's what, that's going to be, because I understand that that's also a shared service among communities. My, the reason I pulled this, and I, and I know that Councilman Rutherford also wanted this pulled, was because of the concern that I had, and I want Mr. Gross to speak on it because we did speak about this earlier. But my concern was the increase of salary to, to, by $40,000. Dover will be paying $65,000, which contributes to $40,000 to his salary and $25,000 to the municipality. My concern was with the added impact of pension payments. And why wouldn't Dover be responsible for that portion and obligation to those pension payments? And also, Mr. Gross, can you talk about the duration of the increase in this contract and what happens when the contract, should the contract no longer be established or in order?
Sure. Since, since, under the, the terms and conditions as this is contemplated, I, I am and would remain to be an employee of West Orange and not an employee of Dover. Dover would not be participating in, in the employment cost within this contract. That's why they are, will be paying on a quarterly basis the $65,000. There, there will be pension obligation for, for that $40,000. First off, I'll be contributing towards it. And as well as there is, during the term of the contract, there would be an obligation for the township. That, that obligation isn't well-defined, but it's rough, you know, it's roughly from what we can tell because we don't get bills by name, but it's roughly, you know, eight to 10%. So it's a similar amount as a match. And that would end, when this contract ended, and if it, if it was not continued on, the salary that we paid me would revert back to my original salary, and there would be no further pension obligation or annual pension obligation, so.
Any, any concern with civil service requirements in, should this contract at some point expire and you revert to your original salary, whatever that structure is at that time? Obviously, it's not, you know, if in a year's time, your structured salary is, is already increased, is there any? Obviously, it's not, you know, if in a year's time, your, um, structured salary is, is already increased, is there any concern with civil service?
The laws on, on shared services are very, very clear and the, the civil service, uh, this will be no, there's no civil service consideration. I'm a statutory employee, so it's, it's different set of rules. Um, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Rutherford, I know you also wanted this poll.
Yes. Um, so I had a similar question, um, as, uh, Council President regarding the employment costs. I, I know that the, uh, pension payments, uh, would be increased. I know that there are other employment costs which, uh, we are bearing for Mr. Gross that, um, uh, Dover would not have to share in, even though they are sharing some of his time. Um, let me back out and say, my initial feeling on this was, uh, Mr. Gross has, uh, been absolutely responsive to me. I've asked him for things literally on the same day that I needed them and he got it done. So my initial response was if he, if it's legal for him to have, uh, another job, uh, you know, uh, contract in another town and he, you know, feels like he, he, he wants to and can do it. And, you know, there's no, uh, noticeable difference in, uh, or, or negligible difference in the quality of the work he does here. Uh, that would be fine. But then I thought about a couple of other things. One, how are we going to handle conflicts for his time? I didn't see anywhere in this resolution or in the agreement, uh, the inter-local services agreement, um, where we address conflicts of time. For example, I, I don't know if they have one tonight, but I know on February 9th Dover has a council meeting. And so we, so how will we handle the need for him to be, you know, able to answer questions in both spaces? What happens if something else comes up in town? Excuse me, where his time is needed here and perhaps there at the same time? How do we handle those conflicts? I know we assume he, his first priority is here, but I didn't see anything, um, in there that, that codified that. And then there's a section in here, section seven, uh, that says the parties agree this is an exclusive service agreement. That's on page two. Um, and it says the chief financial officer may not provide similar services to municipal entities that are not a part of this agreement without the express written approval of the parties. So Dover wants to have a veto right, uh, for additional jobs that Mr. Gross may seek outside of Dover and West Orange. And I can only assume, and I don't know, but my assumption is they have some concern about his ability to perform that additional job as well as his job in Dover and in West Orange. So if they have that concern, I think we should have that concern as well. Um, yeah. And then lastly, you know, I know we have some open, um, issues with regard to contracts for some of our union employees, particularly, um, our firemen. Um, and, you know, I, just as a cultural matter, I think it's important as leaders that we settle those agreements before we add anything to it that might muddy those waters. We don't want to give anyone any incentive to point a finger or say, well, you would, uh, make an exception or you'll look to do something here, but you won't look to do it there. And I know it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Exactly. But from a, a philosophical standpoint, um, there's a book that I just downloaded, uh, Leaders Eat Last. And I think, I think the leadership should make sure that we address, um, those issues with all of our employees before we muddy the waters with something like this. That's just my general thinking. I'm looking forward to hearing the thoughts of the council colleagues.
Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. Uh, do any of my other colleagues have any, uh, comments, questions? Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah. So Mr. Gross, just numerate again. So, so the salary gets, uh, broken down 40. The township keeps 25, but out of that 25, how much is going to the, your pension contribution?
I would say roughly somewhere between 3 and 4,000. Like I, like I said, there is no specific bill, but we do, we do percentage analysis on it. So it comes out around that.
Okay. So I mean, so the township would have at least 20, $21,000, uh, for this proposition.
And as, as, um, uh, Councilman Rutherford, Rutherford indicated, um, there are other employment taxes, but most of them don't apply because of, of the level of my compensation. So it's probably another, another percent. So it's another $40 or some, you know, some, some number like that.
Okay. So, so we let Dover, you, you, instead of 25, it's 21, roughly.
Roughly.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment? I just want to make a comment that we do have other people who have inter-local agreements who work for the township.
Yeah.
So I just want you to be aware of that. John Gross is not going to be the first person that's doing an inter-local agreement. We have other employees in township who are doing inter-local agreements and have been doing them for a very long time.
Yeah. Now, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we, you know, we, you know, Mr. Gross gets extended that, you know, we're not on the hook for that. So, and, and that there's something coming back to the township, not as much as I thought we were going to get. Was there any conversation to, to get more, uh, for the township?
There were a lot, there were lots of negotiations to, to, uh, this, this was, uh, where the negotiations ended up. Um, I can tell you, uh, and I, I understand the concerns. I, I, I think that, that under the circumstances, uh, I, I think this fair is a, a fair representation, uh, for this. And I'd like to point out, uh, within the agreement, you'll see there that we are, we are committing along with Dover to, uh, apply for grant money from the state to look at other areas where we, we could share services. You know, everyone, everyone has always appreciated and wanted to do shared services, but it's very difficult to do. And one of the reasons it's very difficult to do is neither side knows what the other side does and, and how well or, and, and how thorough. Uh, or if it's even compatible with what. And one thing that this, this agreement contemplates is moving forward and looking at other areas. So in this, this circumstance where I will be working in both, um, environments and, 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 and keenly aware of both environments, uh, it will be much more, uh, possible for us to identify other shared services moving forward that would be advantageous for both parties. So I, I see this, uh, as step one and what should become a much, um, larger, um, bit of involvement together where both, both parties save a lot more money. Um, so I, I, you know, that, that's kind of the direction because I, I, I know already from just what I know now, I've, I've seen areas where I think we could provide incremental services that wouldn't cost us very much money and would save, would save a lot of money and we would be able to benefit from that and, and splitting that, you know, those savings up. So, um.
Well, well, I gotta be honest with you. My concern has been, always been, as long as it's not going to, you know, cost us your time and, because your time is very valuable with us. I haven't seen that yet. Is there anything, say, something crazy happens or that they need more of your time in, in Dover? Um, I mean, are you able, I see there's a two-year agreement here.
The three year.
Three, uh, three, oh, three years. Are you, are we, are you able to sever that if, if need be? Um, are we need, are we need, we're in more need of your time here?
Well, first, first, let, let me address, let me, let me address, uh.
Can I address some of this, John?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Is that okay, Council President?
Yes.
A couple of things. So if you'll indulge me for a minute or two. So what we're talking about right now is really the challenge of shared services, right? So, uh, it's a real popular topic in this state where, uh, there are those that assert that this is the cure-all for the property tax problem. And we know that that's not the case. We do know that there is a savings. The, the challenge and, and what we're going through in this conversation is that in the whole shared services premise, there's going to be a town that benefits more than the other town does. And what happens more often than not, it's the smaller town. So, uh, we have had other shared agreements in the past. We have some now. Uh, we, we've worked with Orange. We've worked with Essex Falls. We've worked with Roseland. Uh, and those smaller towns have benefited from our size and our ability to provide a service to them less expensively. And that's what's happening here. A CFO is a constitutional officer. If Dover were to hire a CFO with benefits, and you know how rich the benefit packages are in New Jersey, they're probably going to spend 180 to $200,000. So they're getting a CFO much less expensive and going to enable them to provide the services they need to by having a certified CFO sign off on those expenses. This has been going on for a while, as, as you all know. And one of the reasons that we waited until now to bring it up was the administration also wanted to see that this was not going to impact John's role with the town. And, and let's just set something aside for a second, just for conversational sake. We don't have the ability to stop John from getting another job if he wanted to. So, um, that, that, that aside, we don't have that authority. In this context, of course, we have the ability and the requirement to authorize it. But we did spend these last couple of months in which John was helping in Dover to determine if in fact it was going to impact his job here, as you know, and as you can appreciate, the CFO is pretty vital to town. And I think all of you and Councilman Rutherford's new, so he'll, he'll learn that soon enough, along with Councilwoman Williams. John's receptive around the clock on weekends and, um, and never, never says no to, to put information together. So, um, we use these last couple of months to determine, can he, can he do both? And I'm confident he can. Um, but regardless of the term that's set out within this contract, this is a municipal contract. There's always a 30-day out regardless of how long an agreement might be set for. And, and in case there's any confusion, if we find that this agreement is going to impact John's requirement to serve this community, we're going to, we're going to term it. We're going to come back to the council and term it. I'm confident after these last couple of months that this is something that, uh, in the broader context is good government. It's probably a little bit better for Dover than it is for us, but it is good government. And if there's opportunities for other shared services, we're going to continue to pursue them. There's other shared services we have now. As I mentioned, there's actually other shared services we're exploring now. So I, I think this is a good step towards good government. Uh, but without question, just so the council is, is perfectly clear in the administration's position. If we feel for one second this is going to be impacting our need for John and our need for CFO, we're going to come back to the council and term it. But we're confident, having had him helping them out over these last several months, that we're prepared to move forward. This is really good for Dover and it's still good for West Orange. And we believe it's not going to impact our requirement to serve the community and ultimately John's requirement to, to serve the council as well.
Council President?
Uh, Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. Um, I wanted to, thank you. I wanted to say that I can't even count the number of meetings I have sat in trying to have shared services agreements was always to, um, see how it can benefit the town. Um, I, I know that I text and call John at any time and you know that this seemed like it was a, um, testing ground, so to speak, as the mayor explained. Um, and there still hasn't been a problem. The comments that were raised before, I think, are addressed in section three because if John is going to serve as the, um, financial officer there, uh, he will also perform, uh, the work will be performed by the finance office staff. So if he is supervising them, there's bond counsel, financial advisors, auditors. Um, other people will fill that role that he is supervising. So I just know how many times we've looked for more shared services agreement. I'm glad that the mayor is saying that they're still pursuing that. Uh, we have been for many, many years. So, and the fact that we can get out in 30 days, if need be, uh, it's okay.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams?
I thank you so much, Council President. I just wanted to make a couple of comments regarding to this. Um, first, I, I would like to say that, um, I, I supported an even more, um, out-of-pocket payment to our CFO. Um, I thought that, um, he's doing the work. He's the one putting the time in. He's doing the work. Granted, it is a shared service, but, you know, while we're sitting here nickel and dime and what comes back to the municipality, he, he's doing the majority of the work, if not 99 to 100% of the work. Um, I have to also concede that while I am new to the council, I am not new to interacting and encounters with Mr. Gross. He is always available. Um, I will also be more than happy to put on the record, I am in my last two weeks of a, uh, master's, a public administration class. Um, I am having to run my own, uh, company, corporation. I have called on him numerous times, uh, for assistance. He is always available. It doesn't matter if it, if he has a, a major budgetary, uh, task upcoming, he is always available. Um, so I have no doubt that he can handle this municipality of 47,000 plus residents with the $83 million budget. Um, Dover, as we know, is half that size. It may have 20,000 residents. Um, so we know that their budget does not exceed. But this man does this in his sleep with his eyes closed, eats budget for breakfast. I have no concern that he will be able to do this municipality, a Dover municipality and any other municipality. He is just that good. And I understand our concern about sharing him and his availability. Uh, but, uh, the John Gross that I know that I have dealt with in no uncertain terms will not be able to manage this. And I also know that in the event, it is overwhelming and, and it, it bears itself as something that he cannot accommodate, that he would be the first person, uh, to, to indicate that this is something that we may need to prove it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Okay. Um, I think that we have all, um.
Can I just make one quick statement? I'm sorry to belabor the point. Thank you, Council President. Um, section, section three does not address, and neither does section four, conflicts of time. Um, and so, you know, I, I don't know what, if anything, can be done at this late hour, but I would like to know that, um, if there is a conflict in his, um, his, his presence requested or required at West Orange, uh, and Dover at the same time, that, um, we have some way of making sure that we take priority. Thank you.
Ca- Councilman, if I can just address that, you, when you look in the agreement, cut, uh, the other side of that is, is true as well that there is nothing in the agreement that allows Dover to command my attendance at any given time as well. Uh, it really, it is left up to me as, as to how I'm going to supervise their operation. And that's all I'm doing. I'm not doing their day-to-day. I'm just supervising their operation. So I can tell you, uh, I work for West Orange and when West Orange needs something, it's going to, West Orange will get what it needs. And to the extent that I need to rearrange my own personal time, which I do already, e- even for West Orange, um, uh, that, that's not going to be an issue. Uh, and I'll just, and I know, realize that our relationship is new, but you, I, 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 um, ask you to ask about my hours amongst, uh, people that I work with. And I welcome you to do that because I think what you're going to find out is this guy doesn't sleep, you know?
And, you know, when they get their emails from me at three o'clock in the morning, you know, i- i- it, you know,
it, they, they complain about other people and they see me doing this. Well, maybe it's, maybe, you know, well, whatever. So. I don't think you're going to have an issue ultimately. And, and I, and I think Councilwoman is right. If it gets to the point where I can't do it, I can't, I, I'm, I'm too proud of the work that I do to allow anything to, to, uh, to make it, allow anything to make it substandard in any way. So if, if there's, if there's an issue, I'm going to, you're going to hear it from me first. So, thanks.
Got it.
Thank you. Um, Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve 21, 21?
So moved?
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on second and final reading, twenty-six, twenty-six dash twenty-one. An ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsection seven dash nineteen through streets and subsection seven dash twenty-one point two. Multway stops near schools, playgrounds, and youth recreation facilities of the revised general ordinances of the township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Public comment?
Yeah, this is the time for public hearing on this ordinance.
Is there, um, is, um, Lauren?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi. So yes, I, you know, I didn't, I didn't drop this in the agenda. I always forget that there's a public comment after the, the second one. So I apologize. I'll bring up the timer in one moment. So if we do have anyone who would like to speak, uh, it is the raise your hand function located at the bottom of the screen. And there are no, uh, hands being raised.
Okay.
Thank you, Lauren.
Does the council wish to comment on this ordinance?
No.
No one? Okay. Is there a motion to approve on second and final reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinances on first reading. Twenty-six, twenty-seven dash twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing the offer by private sale of the property at block one seventy-five point thirteen, lot three, on the township of West Orange tax map to the adjacent property owners pursuant to the local lands use and building law. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Councilwoman has a question.
Yeah, uh, is Mr. Lepore on the call tonight? Yes.
He is.
Yes.
So I am.
Hi there, Mr. Lepore. How are you?
Good evening. Thank you. I'm well.
Good. So where, where, what street is this on?
These properties are, are on Melanie Avenue.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Section of Melanie Avenue. Between Garfield Avenue and Terrace.
This is what we approved last year for this, for this purpose.
Similar neighborhood, same neighborhood.
Okay.
Different properties. Um, there were residents that have expressed an interest in this undeveloped property.
Thank you. I forgot to ask you, uh, this morning when we chatted.
Thank you. And Councilwoman, um, thank you for bringing that up. Um, that's gonna be the same for the next ordinance. Also, uh, public should know that these are odd, um, lot sizes, so not, not, um, something that's being Thank you. Council, uh, uh, sorry, Madam Clerk.
Ordinance twenty-six, twenty-eight dash twenty-one. An ordinance authorizing the offer by private sale of the property at block one seventy-five point thirteen, lot four, on the township of West Orange tax map to the adjacent property owners pursuant to the local lands use and building law. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some move.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-six, twenty-nine dash twenty-one. An ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsection seven dash eighteen point one. One-way streets designated subsection seven dash seventy-three point three. Temporary parking prohibited for snow plowing and removal. Subsection seven dash eleven, parking time limited on certain streets dur- during certain hours. Subsection seven dash twelve, parking prohibited for street cleaning and maintenance. Subsection seven dash thirteen, parking prohibited at all times on certain streets. Subsection seven dash fourteen point one C, night parking restricted. Subsection seven dash fourteen point seven, alternative side parking and subsection seven dash twenty-five, loading zones of the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some move.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Twenty-six, thirty dash I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I know, I know, even though we don't have the public, I know we get to ask some questions before next time. So Mr. Lepore, I need you up at that again. So regards to all of these changes, obviously this is around, uh, Edison Lofts neighborhood. Ours is on the other side of, of, uh, Ashland.
Correct. It's the section of Ashland Avenue from Park Avenue north to Lakeside Avenue.
To Lakeside Avenue. Okay. So just wanted to, to make sure there. Okay. So with that, will we be contacting, uh, the residents, uh, for second reading or?
Yes, I'll advise the residents, uh, certainly advise PRISM. And not just the residents of Ashland Avenue, even, uh, the few, a few number of residents on Charles Street.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Mr. Lepore.
Have a question, Council President?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman, did you say something?
Yeah, I, I have an additional question, if I may. Thank you, Council President. Um, Mr. Lepore, just, um, a question where we have eliminated, um, parking for snow plowing and for certain hours uh, on certain streets as well as night parking being restricted. What will be the alternative, uh, plans or provisions, uh, for these residents?
Now, what, what this does allow is this will allow parking on both sides of Ashland Avenue from Park Avenue to Lakeside. With the exception of a, a bit of a loading area near the main entrance to the Edison Lofts. A lot of deliveries there. Uh, we need a place for, for, to really have no parking except for deliveries. So there will be a, a loading area near the, the main entrance where the concierge is. Other than that, there'll be parking on both sides of Ashland Avenue. With the exception of a brief period, one day each week, when, um, we ask people not park so that we can sweep the street. And then the night parking restriction is actually an exemption from the night parking. So it allows parking overnight.
Thank you, sir.
Len, Council President, may I ask?
Yes.
Len, you said that you were going to notify PRISM. Do you find that, or I don't know the, how you would know, but is it that the residents are not parking in the parking deck that's provided for them and that they're parking on the street?
Well, uh, that, that's a sense, although certainly we've never done, uh, a- any sort of inventory to see uh, who's parking and, and where, where those residences live or, or where the owners of those cars live that park on the street. I mean, certainly there, there is a tremendous demand for parking in here even without PRISM. So this is a, a need to provide additional on-street parking at all times as well as to provide the safe movement of traffic. And in this particular case, to do that, we want to make Ashland Avenue one-way. And this will be consistent with the, uh, block of Ashland Avenue from White Street to Park Avenue. That, too, is one-way northbound direction.
And there's no effect on emergency vehicles?
Um, actually, right now, there is an effect on emergency vehicles because there's, uh, uh, occasionally some blockages on the road when deliveries are made. So the purpose of this is to not have opposing traffic on the street, to allow parking, to provide a place where there's a, a loading zone for the Edison Lofts.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk.
Uh, Councilman Rutherford has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Rutherford.
It's all right. Uh, just a question. I, I know that this is, um, a one-way headed toward, uh, well, headed northbound. Is there a need, is there a need for, um, any of the other, uh, side streets like Standish, for example, to be a, a one-way in the opposite direction? I'm not, I'm just, I don't have a clue. I know that there's an issue on Ashland. I've witnessed it myself trying to drive through there. Just curious, is that going to create uh, some other backup somewhere? Because now everybody's headed in one direction and have to head out the other. It, it, has that been looked at?
It, it, it's been discussed. Um, and it, it may come that we would need to make Standish Avenue one-way. I, I hope not. We do have our, uh, the Board of Ed has the, the bus depot there. So I, I'm not tr- I don't really want to restrict the flow on Standish Avenue to limit how buses come in or out, but it's a possibility. We may need to come back and revisit that.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-six, thirty dash twenty-one. An ordinance amending and supplementing chapter seven, traffic subsection seven dash thirty-two point two. Restricted parking zones of the revised general ordinances of West Orange, five seventy-one Valley Road and eight Cross Street. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some move.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams? Councilwoman Williams?
You're muted.
Sorry, you're muted. I'm sorry, yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes.
Okay. No questions. Twenty-six, thirty-one dash twenty-one. An ordinance amending and supplementing chapter two, section fifty-one of the general ordinances of West Orange entitled Human Relations Commission. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some move.
Second.
Okay. Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
You're muted, Councilwoman.
Yes.
Council President Matute Brown?
Yes. So I, I think, um, this has come up in public comment, so I think it's appropriate for us to discuss this, um, during this, um, portion. The human relations commissioners, um, for some time have been working on, um, changing the structure of the HRC as much as the mayor typically appoints the chair. This is also a conversation I've had with some of my council colleagues, not just with this, um, commission or committee, but also with others to help make these, um, boards and commissions a little bit more autonomous and more independent. So this ordinance proposes to, um, do two things, to change the language, to bring it up to, um, the language of diversity and equity today. Also changes the structure in as much as it allows the commissioners that are appointed by the mayor, and the mayor has three appoints- appointments, um, on the commission. Each council member has one appointment, uh, I'm sorry, two appointments on the commission. This change, um, will allow all of those commissioners to select amongst themselves who their chair is, who their vice chair is, and who their, um, treasurer and secretary are. Those are the real, um, crux of the changes. I know that earlier in public comment, there was comment with respect to bylaws. That is not before us. Um, that is something that the commissioners will, will work on, um, together. And it does have to come before council to be able to approve, um, those bylaws. But today, what's before us is changing the structure so that they can better govern themselves. Obviously, they have oversight by, um, those of us who appoint them as we do have oversight with all of our appointees on other boards and commissions. So that's what this is here, um, before us to do. Like I said, and we were all copied and sent the same, um, table of, um, contents, if you will. It was a timeline, um, outlining the times of discussions, the work that all of the commissioners have put in to ensure this change. And I, um, certainly, I know we're not voting on this tonight. This is only first reading, but, um, wanted to stress that this is something that I have certainly also advocated for, um, for no other reason other than I believe that their autonomy, uh, will help them be more productive in their representation of, um, the community. Yes, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yeah, so, um, Councilwoman, so I'm gonna need two things. Oh, actually, well, one thing. So can I, uh, Madam Clerk, is there a red line copy of the changes that we could get for, you know, after tonight? So I
Yeah, I can ask, um, Mark Moon for that.
And then the second conversation, um, that I want to have in regards to all of this is, and I was talking, um, um, a while ago with, with, uh, Councilwoman McCartney, when we were talking about adding these additional commissions and to have a council liaison, because that's the, you know, that's what, um, you know, this is why we're looking at this tonight, because we want to add a coun- a council liaison appointment to this. To give all our, you know, we have new council members and to give everyone a, you know, fair number of, uh, jobs and responsibilities with the committees. So with that being said, um, I, we have to have, have a little consistency, because you have some commission that are fully appointed by, by the mayor. And again, I, I said this earlier in the evening. I think that's just due to, as these commissions came up, that's the way they were, and nobody really thought of the consistency factor, which is, which is fine. But now we're doing the work, and I, I think we need to make the effort to see, uh, how we could be consistent with these boards. So, you know, that, that's my comment for this evening, for this right now. I want to see the red line copy. And, uh, you know, then, then move forward. We're trying to clean some of these things, items up.
So Councilwoman, to your point, um, I did neglect to mention that, uh, the council liaison position is included also in this, um, ordinance.
Yeah.
Also, I'll, I'll forward an email that, um, attorney Mark Moon shared with me, um, with respect to, because since we've been talking about, um, making sure that all of the, um, committees and boards, um, are in compliance with their bylaws, their membership, um, and their organizational structure, just so that they can be more effective and more representative. He did send me a memo, if you will, that I will share with council that he did, um, in twenty nineteen, studying all of the commissions, boards, um, and committees. Where he outlined, uh, the differences, um, where we needed to improve, what we needed to, um, remove that were, commissions that were defunct and things of that nature. So I'll share that with the council so that, uh, we can make sure that there is that consistency as well. Councilwoman McCartney, I saw your hand up.
Yes, thank you. So I believe that all of these commissions were set up to, uh, promote and advise the town, make recommendations to the town. And, um, I see there has been language change in here, but I still believe that the Human Relations Commission's purpose is to, I'm reading, foster communication, understanding, cooperation among all groups and residents of the township, promote the celebration and preservation of all of our residents' unique cultural customs, and to promote the regular civil and productive communications between the diverse groups of the residents. I believe the Human Relations Commission has been doing that for the past, I don't even know how many years. Uh, there isn't a date on this, but it had been revised over the years. And I believe that the commissions are their town, I know, town-sponsored. That it should be the mayor, what I was saying before is that I pulled all of these resolutions because it should be the mayor. The commission can appoint either a co-chair or a vice president, a treasurer, and a secretary. As spelled out in some, but not all of these ordinances. And that there should be council appointments on each, because some, for whatever reason, are mayoral appointments, and some we have appointments to them. So that's, the inconsistency doesn't make sense. And I don't believe that this should be an autonomous body, because it should be representative of the township, which I believe that it always has been.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think that those commissions or, or boards that are appointed solely by the mayor are statutory, such as the-
No, that's true on the, excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. That's true on the planning board, but if you look at the Environmental Commission, and I know we're going to talk about that, they were all mayoral appointments. And we talked about, the other thing that's inconsistent is that some mention that the council liaison is a non-voting member, but yet others don't have that provision in there. So that also should be consistent throughout every ordinance, deciding if they should be, I think they should not be a voting member. It's supposed to be an advisory council, a commission.
We, we've had this discussion also with our attorney Kaiser with respect to the fact that there are some council liaisons who have been voting on commissions and boards. I agree, we are advisory only, so that language is also a language to be discussed, to modify on those that have. You know, I, I think the discussion was that it wasn't thought to be spelled out in the ordinances, because they are advisory, and by the nature of being advisory is non-voting. But I, I do understand that some members have, some liaisons have been voting along with their commissions and committees. So that is, that has changed, yes.
I'm just, I just want to point out that almost all our, I think all our boards, commissions, agencies are, have odd numbers on them, for the obvious reason that you don't want to create a situation that frequently will have top votes. And so the main reason, from my perspective, as to why a council liaison position would be non-voting is to avoid that situation that you're creating effectively, an even-numbered board. All these boards and commissions are advisory, advisory only. They have no real power. And of course, the planning board and the zoning board are exceptions, and they're statutory. So this is a completely different situation. But I just want to make that point. I'm happy to work with Mark Moon with respect to making all these things consistent. There are other issues that we talked about, and I don't know if you want to talk about it now, maybe not, but there are provisions in a lot of these ordinances for removal of, of appointees for cause, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, given, given that they're volunteer committees. They, they have no real power. It seems to me we should consider making them all, having all appointees serve at the pleasure of, of the, of the council member or the mayor who's making the appointment. There's, there's, oh, it doesn't make any sense to, if someone is not happy with the work that an appointee is doing, we shouldn't have to go through a process where we have to hire lawyers and have hearings and so forth. It doesn't make any sense.
Council President, I just, I wanted to pick up what Ken just said about that all the commissions do have an odd number, but on most of the commissions, if there is a council liaison, the council liaison is in that headcount. So if we are going to remove that council liaison as a non-voting member, then that opens up a space for another volunteer.
Well, if you're correct, we, that's something we need to look at and consider.
Right. The council liaison is in the headcount on the ordinances. So, and it's still, they're, they are odd, but the council liaison shouldn't even be in that headcount.
I agree.
Yeah.
Do any of my other colleagues have anything? Councilwoman Williams now?
So thank you, Council President, again, and thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. I think it is important for us as the council elected officials, for us to really review each of our ordinances and to provide some consistency. So I just want to continue to reiterate that. And then my additional concern is not necessarily how we choose to elect a president or chairman in particular commissions. My concern would be, just for what I understand to be basic protocol and procedure, except for a statutory requirement, would it not behoove us to have all of our commissions with some type of consistency?
I'm sorry, you froze. I, I missed that.
I said, I, I think it just behooves us as council to have, to make sure that each of our boards and commissions are consistent in how they function, and not to pull out any particular commission. For instance, if you want to have, I mean, if it's, if it's the desire to have a self-elected chair, then I just think that practice should be consistent with all of our boards that aren't a statutory requirement. And so, you know, let's not just pick and choose which commission we want to have a self-appointed chair. If that's the procedure and protocol that we want to follow, let's implement that across the board. And, and I'm not in agreement with that. I think the mayor should appoint all chairpersons of each commission where it's not a statutory prohibition otherwise.
Thank you. And just to be clear, it wasn't picking and choosing. I know that this is a discussion we've had with the Public Relations Commission, with the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Board. It's as we're going through these, to be able to bring them up to consistency for all of them across the board, that we are, that, that we've listed them. I know that Councilwoman Rutherford is currently working with, with his advisory board to bring them into compliance and organizational structure and bylaws, and also to elect, self-elect their chair. We, we have spoken about the public relations, so it's not picking and choosing. We are going through them, you know, as, as we're getting to them.
I think, I disagree with what you're saying.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman.
I just have a follow-up to that before you go, Councilwoman McCartney. Just wanted to make note that in parliamentary procedure, usually when you make these kind of changes, you do it across the board. It is not one commission at a time, so I just want to note that.
Okay, thank you, noted. Councilman Rutherford?
I'm happy to defer to Councilwoman McCartney, but, you know, it's up to you.
Well, no, the point I wanted to make was that that was a contradiction, what we're saying here, because what we're saying is that we want the Human Relations Commission to be autonomous, when I believe that that is singling out an ordinance, that what we should be determining right now, we're voting on, is the mayor the one that appoints the chair, and the commissioners vote on the rest of the hierarchy of the body or the board itself, the vice chair, treasurer, and secretary, which some of the ordinance don't spell that out. So I think what we're voting on right now is that what we want, do we want the mayor to have the appointment of the chair on all of our, all of our commissions, and then spell that out, that, who our appointments are and/or how many appointments, based on the number? And it sounds like we're going to have to change that too, because in some of them, there are people in the administration that serve on the board. So they wouldn't be voting members either.
So just to your point, it's not a contradiction when we are looking at other commissions and boards to change. This is just the one that's before us now. So I beg to differ, it's not a contradiction. We're not singling out. We have had this conversation with respect to other commissions.
Well, no, but I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is that you're saying that this should not be, this commission should not have a chair appointed by the mayor. So how is that different than the other commissions? That's why this one is, is being singled out, because you're asking for it to be autonomous.
So, so we've had this discussion. Yes, I, I see that. Councilwoman Castellino and I have had this discussion with respect to the PRC. It's just not an ordinance that I have gotten to read yet, but it is on that list as well. So when I say that I am not picking and choosing, it's because we are looking at all the ordinances that we think would be more effective if they self-select their chairs and their organizational structure.
That was the point I was making. The point I'm making is what we need to vote on right now is, do we agree that the mayor appoints the chair to all of these commissions? That's what we're really voting on. Or else you're changing it to be auton, to have an autonomous board here and there.
Right, right now, okay.
Can I, can I interject here for a moment? I, I, I could be completely wrong, right? I accept that, so please, if I am, forgive me, it is not intentional. It is my understanding that the HRC was created in the mid-nineties as a response to or as part of a lawsuit against the township of West Orange, because we did not have a diverse police force. In fact, I believe we didn't have any African-Americans on the police force at that time. The NAACP sued West Orange to force West Orange to hire diverse candidates for the police force. As a part of that, a commission, and I'm not sure, was initially called the HRC, Human Relations Commission, but a group was created to address the disparities in town. At that time, West Orange was noted as a very diverse town. It was nowhere near as diverse as it is now. And there were, the issues were that enough people felt that the voices of particular communities in West Orange were not being included. And so a commission of some sort was needed to bridge the gap between the community and the administration to help address the issues of inclusion. The issue of diversity was already taken care of. So if that is the, if that is the purpose to bridge that gap, and we can see now, just by the very presence of this particular council, right? Four women, one man, three people of color. This has never happened in the history of West Orange. So we see that inclusion is beginning to happen, right? And as a result of that, we want the body that's responsible for it. Because earlier in this very meeting, I remarked about inclusion with regard to vendors and contractors, and the responses I got were very systemic. I'm not trying, I, I know people want me to be the bad guy. I'm not the bad guy. I'm not accusing anyone of anything. What I'm saying is, the responses were, well, this is what the statute says, or this is what the law says, or this is how we do this kind of thing. If it's not meeting the need, something need, something new needs to be done. So the reason why I'm supportive of this particular change to the Human Relations Commission, and, and that one in particular, is because of the mandate that that one has. The HRC is responsible for making sure that town hall employees reflect the diversity in this town, that the police force and the firefighters reflect the diversity in this town, that they, that those voices are included in those spaces, and every other space within this town. And, and not just from an employee standpoint, but from a business owner's standpoint, an entrepreneur's standpoint, the, the access to all of the opportunities that we have within West Orange. So I think that requires a body that has the ability to select their own leadership that will help accomplish that goal. And I, and I'm not accusing our mayor of anything. I know that will probably come up as an outcome of what I've said, and I want to be very clear. I'm not accusing our mayor of appointing someone or selecting people who have a hidden agenda. What I'm saying is, if we're focused on systemic oppression, we have to acknowledge that many times people operate within that system and don't even realize how they're perpetuating it. So we need a system in place where we can have a leadership selected from the body that is empowered by that body to do the work of that body, not appointed to that body to do that work, regardless of what the appearance may be. So, so that's my thinking on it, and I think it's worth, not just the discussion, but also the change. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Rutherford. I want to give our attorney Kaiser the opportunity to-
Council President, I, I, I hear Councilman Rutherford loud and clear, and, and I guess what I want to point out is that the body that he's talking about, that has the responsibility to do those things, is you. It's the council and the mayor. And the only, the only, and I haven't talked about this issue at all with, with the mayor, frankly, but the, there's a logical governmental reason for the mayor to select chair, chairpersons of volunteer committees, that being that he, under the Faulkner Act, which is the statute that governs your structure and your functions, he's the chief policy, policy initiator for the town and mayor council forum of government. So that's a mentally logic reason, logical reason for him to have that appointment. But I don't know that he, I really don't know whether he cares about that or, or not. I mean, he may be happy to have a board, a commission that's a volunteer commission and an advisory commission, appoint their own chairperson, I, I don't know. So I can't speak to that, but I just wanted to get that out so that everybody understands it.
Okay, thank you, Ken. I think that-
Just, may I, Council President, just, I will do my best to be brief. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. And I do agree, the mayor should, we are Faulkner Act town. I do agree the mayor, by virtue of being the mayor, he should have the, the ability to do certain things to make sure that the government runs in the, in, in, in a way that realizes his vision. So I, I do agree with that in a general sense. I think the particular mandate of this particular body requires a, a second look. And that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Castellino?
So my suggestion would be, because again, we talk about consistency, I think we should just move forward with, you know, these are all on first reading, so regardless, and maybe save the conversation about how we want to move forward with the consistencies in general, because I feel like we're just singling out one commission, which isn't fair, because inconsistencies are with other commissions. So I think, you know, that's my suggestion, if we could finish this conversation in pending matters.
Sure. I, I don't see-
That serves a purpose.
Yeah. It, it's on first reading, so we, we have second reading to discuss-
And we have other commissions we're trying to make consistent, so. That's all. That's just my recommendation, Council President.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-six thirty-two twenty-one, an ordinance of the township of West Orange, adopting a redevelopment plan relating to the Executive Drive Rooney Circle redevelopment area. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
Some move.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes. I know that there was, yes, Councilwoman Castellino.
Just a quick question for Councilwoman McCartney, being that she's a liaison to the planning board. So there was some discussion in, in, with some of the comments this evening in regards to requirements. Explain the reasoning in the report for recommendations versus some of these requirements with the language, so that the planners telling us, or telling the planning board recommendations in regards to the environmental, that, what was that, page eighteen? But-
I'm not sure I understand your question, but-
I guess what I'm trying to say is, why, why isn't it a require, why aren't they making certain items requirements, or you're not just there yet? That goes to, the zoning board will require that.
Oh, no, no. So we changed our master plan a few years back to add a sustainable, a sustainable checklist for all applications. So what we're trying to do now, since this is an area of redevelopment, in need of redevelopment, and it has been unanimously voted on by the planning board, given to us, and we have determined that it is consistent with the criteria in the redevelopment housing law, that we want, we want that sustainable checklist, we want them to adhere to that sustainable checklist. Our ordinance reads where, yes, they can look at it, but if it doesn't work, then they, it doesn't happen. And according to our building inspector, we cannot on a regular application- And according to our building inspector, we cannot, on a regular application, we could not condition an applicant if it doesn't meet the building codes, or any, we can't supersede what the building codes already are. In an area, area need of redevelopment, since we are, these are the green design standards, we are stressing that they need to be in the plan. So that's what we've expanded, what was in the original plan, no bioswales and stormwater management, all of that has to be, they have to comply with regulations for that, but we're adding a little more specific prescribing the plan. There are outlines, starting on page twenty-eight, the green building standards, there are checklists for that. We are instituting a point system where if twenty-nine things are listed here, they have to meet at least twenty of them. There is passive solar, ventilation, shading, pedestrian paths. I didn't know if you want me to read the whole list, but. It's ten pages, ten pages of things that I did try to email to all the residents, and every email came back.
And I misspoke, I mean, they were going to the zoning board, I misspoke, because when they come back.
So the plan comes back to the planning board. So in order for us to put these recommendations in, we want this, in this plan, that this is what we're asking them to do.
Yeah. So there's another checkpoint where you'll see the plan again, and.
Yes.
Could review it. That's the point I was trying to make. Thank you, Councilwoman. And thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Do any of my other council colleagues have any questions or want to have a discussion?
I'm sorry that I buried my notes, because I had all the ordinances on the commissions in front of me, and now I have to, I'm pulling out the, of the notes.
Okay, so, so when I, I'm gonna, while you do that, I am going to just point out a couple of things that, that I know, I, I hear what you just said, that there is going to be a more in-depth and detailed plan to come before the planning board. I have a concern with language that allows or encourages or suggests to do. And then what is the repercussion, or what is the recourse, not a repercussion, but what is the recourse for the township? Let's say on page twenty-six, where we're talking about stormwater management, it says, you know, the third bulletin down on page twenty-six, to the extent feasible, development within the Executive Drive Rooney Circle redevelopment areas should utilize green infrastructure. Why is that should, and why is it to the extent feasible? What happens if they say, well, it's not feasible, so we're not doing it? What is the township recourse in that, in that regard? Why doesn't it say shall?
That's right, so that's what we're trying to put in here, that, that's how our ordinance reads on the sustainable checklist. Because what we're adding here, that's how our ordinance reads. What we're adding in here is that a minimum of twenty of the following twenty-nine sustainable actions shall be included in the redevelopment project.
But I think Council President Mathieu Brown, again, when it says to the extent feasible, that is not an option. It only allows an alternative, or I'll call it a safety valve, if it's not feasible. It doesn't, it doesn't give them an out. That just means if, from an environmental, you know, this all has to, you know, has, is subject, anytime you do this runoff in these issues, there are various government entities that are, are looking at it, agencies. So I, I don't believe that especially that example would allow a developer, when they get back to the planning board, to skirt that issue at all. And I do think the, 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 the point on page twenty-eight, where it says they must have a minimum of twenty of the twenty-nine sustainable actions, certainly undertakes all of the aspects of the greenness that have, that apparently was added to this as part of the planning board review last week.
Okay, Richard, thank you, but Cindy, I wanted to, I want to point out a paragraph just above that. This is in the amendment of the Sustainable Sustainability Plan. It says, in addition to the specific design. I am on, well, I'm on page twenty-eight. Well.
The page is switched.
Yeah, they're all different. I'm looking at the actual amendment of the Sustainability Plan. I pulled that out separately, but it says all redevelopment projects shall comply with the following guilt, green building standards. So that is in there that they shall apply. The list goes on to what they need to do.
Right, Councilwoman McCartney is right, it's on page twenty-eight. It says, in addition.
I, I, I did see that, but also talks about twenty of the twenty-nine items on that.
So that, that sentence is for the lead certification program, where they are encouraged to, but not required to, but they will be required to do everything else that's in this plan. So we're kind of spelling out, spelling it all out for them.
So I'm confused now, because these, what follows the section that you just highlighted, Councilwoman McCartney, on page twenty-eight, the, the language that you just addressed, all redevelopment projects shall comply with the following green building standards, right? And then we have twenty-nine. Am I, yeah, we have twenty-nine items listed, yes, twenty-nine items listed. But then, in another place, we say they must do at least twenty of them. So that's a conflict. Do they have to do all twenty-nine as this seems to indicate? Or do they have to do twenty of the twenty-nine? And if they do, if they do, how do we determine which, who gets to determine which twenty?
It could be any or all of them. So we're saying that they have to do at least twenty of those twenty-nine. And that will come before us when they present their plan.
Is that superseded by this language on page twenty-eight? All redevelopment projects shall comply with the following green building standards.
Now, I think from an interpret, it, it's, it's clear with the Councilwoman McCartney is, it, it's twenty of the twenty-nine, and, and that is, would be the green requirement, which is linked up to the lead certification program without the added expense. We went through this, we had Mr. DeFeo involved last year, when we were, as part of Fair Share Housing, dealing with West Essex Highlands. The, the lead certification program is a tremendously expensive program, but the criteria in it are these twenty-nine items. And basically, that's why you list them. But clearly, just to answer your question, Councilman Rutherford, this is going to require that twenty of the twenty-nine, and that will be before the planning board, when the plan is filed, they'll have to show proof to the planning board that they, in order to be, get as of right zoning, they'll have to show proof to the planning board, and the planning board will have to approve it of the twenty of the twenty-nine that they're going to meet.
Which then means they have not followed through with what is stated right here on page twenty-eight. All redevelopment projects shall comply with the following green building standards. And then they are listed, so there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a conflict there.
No, wait, let me just explain that. So we're, we're saying two different things. That what they have to comply with are all of the things that are in this redevelopment plan spelled out. The twenty of the twenty-nine would be from the lead certification program. So the sentence that, that was read before, the redeveloper is encouraged, but not required to register the buildings in the USGBC lead certification program. So they're being encouraged, but they're not required, but they still do need to comply with twenty of the twenty-nine of those certifications.
And, and you can, Councilman Rutherford, you can see the way the bullets are, if you look.
I do, it's a little misleading, but, so what that paragraph is stating is that all redevelopment projects shall comply with this one paragraph bullet, green building standards immediately following. And then, these other twenty-nine things, they have to, in addition to that, subscribe to a, 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 you know, incorporate twenty of the following twenty-nine.
Right.
Right, so that poses a challenge for me. You know, I have a host of challenges with this, but that poses a challenge for me, because now they're in the driver's seat choosing what twenty of the twenty-nine they use. And then if you, if one of those twenty, if one of them is, that they choose not to, to use, i- is something that we don't agree with, or that we think should be there, it's too late. We have no, we have no recourse, there's nothing we can, we can do about it.
But, Councilman, that'll be before the planning board. So I, first of all, don't forget that the lead certification is not, I, I, I've not been through the lead certification, but it's not necessarily a hundred percent of these anyway. But again, Councilman Rutherford, that'll be before the planning board. So they'll, they're going to have to pick, as you say, pick those horses, those twenty horses, when they go for site plan approval before the planning board. So the planning board, if the planning board has, again, these are all equally, you know, I, again, Councilwoman McCartney has probably more experience than anyone on the council, but presumably all of these are important. Again, you can skim through them, and you can see that some deal with, you know, you see high efficiency toilets, low flow fixtures. So they're, they're all important, but they're all a little different. And so it seems that at the end, that what'll have to happen is, and what does happen, is that the planning board will hear them identify and incorporate the twenty of the twenty-nine, and the planning board will, that's the planning board's job to look at the application when it comes before that.
So to that point, there are, I'm trying to find it in the, there are design standards already built into the plan, and they start on page twenty-four, lighting, sidewalks, utilities, stormwater management. And then, so that's already, they have to comply with those ordinances that apply to those. And then, now we're being very prescriptive, telling them this is how we want it done. So the basic ordinances are built into the standards, and, and now we're spelling it out for them.
So if they choose, for example, that, of the, of the twen- of the nine that they choose not to use, if one of them is recycle or salvage construction or demolition debris, which can be very costly, they choose not to do that, that is a critical, to me, component of building green, is making sure that we recycle or, or do the very best we can not to have a, you know, a tremendous impact on the environment because of the waste that is produced on site. That one could be expensive for them to comply with. And if they choose for expense purposes not to, are we really doing ourselves and our residents a service by allowing that kind of flexibility?
Can I, can I ask a question, Councilman? Do you mind if I?
Me? Oh, yeah, I'm very flexible. I, I, I would appreciate a conversation, actually.
Yeah, so, so Councilwoman McCartney, so to, to Councilman's point, if they did come up with that, when it goes back to the planning board, is there the mechanism in place that they could not accept what, what they, what they asked for?
Yes, I, I, and again, to go to Councilman Rutherford's hypothetical, I guess, I guess hypothetically, if they went in and said, that'll cost twenty million dollars, it's not practical, we can't do that, then that's something the planning board will have to evaluate, as to whether or not it is something that, because of everything else that's being done, they understand, there's topographical issues, we know, on Executive Drive. Again, there's a whole multitude of site plan issues that the planning board regularly handles, and this concept of a point system, and again, Councilwoman McCartney can comment it more, because it's not an unusual process, because you can see, when you look at the twenty-nine items, they run the gamut. And again, while I respect, you know, someone could say one is more important than the other, they're all important. I, I think that they're all important, but not necessarily all are going to be feasible. So that's where they come up with this twenty out of twenty-nine. I don't think Councilwoman McCartney, that somebody just picked it out of the air. I assume that's what was recommended by the planner, but you could comment on that more.
Yes, that, they were recommending. But also to Bill's point, the burden of proof will be on the applicant to explain the, what, their reasons why. So, and if they're not strong enough for us, then they have to comply. So that's all part of the planning process.
I, I, I want to interject, because I'm reading the ordinance, and the ordinance does call for a waste management plan for recycling and or reusing sixty percent of the construction and demolition. I mean, this language is already in the ordinance. So how do they have an option to not comply? And why is it their proof to, why, why do they have to prove that they can't do it if it's in the ordinance?
Well, and that's what I was saying, that's what I was saying before, Councilwoman, thank you. That's what I was saying before, that this goes hand in hand with the design standards that are already in there, because they have to comply with all of our ordinances. We have an ordinance that says that. You can't decide that they can't do that. The ordinances are already in place.
Then maybe I misunderstood, when you said that they have to provide proof as to why they can't do that. Why wouldn't they have to comply with the ordinance? The ordinance is in place, so why would they have to provide proof? I, I, I might have misunderstood what you said by providing proof.
I think it depends on what it is that we're asking them to do.
To comply with the ordinance, let's say, to, to Councilman Rutherford's point, if they come back and say it's not feasible, for whatever reason, you said that they have to provide proof that it's not. But why do they have to provide proof that they can't comply with the ordinance? It's the ordinance.
No, well, they do have to comply with the ordinances. I, I'm not saying that they're not going to comply with the ordinance.
The ordinance, I, Council President is correct, the ordinance will govern, the, the ordinance will govern.
They have to comply.
So, so this redevelopment plan, in, in, in any way, if this redevelopment plan is in any way contradictory to the ordinance, the ordinance supersedes.
Yeah.
They have to comply with the ordinances, or else they have to ask for a variance.
Because that, that sounds to me, like if that's not the case, if that's not, if there's no legal precedent that the ordinance supersedes this redevelopment agreement, which is a contract between the developer and us, right? If, if there's nothing that says that the ordinance doesn't supersede that, then it's just open up to interpretation, which is going to require some attorneys and some time that, and money that we don't want to use.
Yes, I wanted to make the point, though, going back to what Cindy was saying about complying with ordinances. If, let's just say, number one talks about solar, we don't have an ordinance on our books that say solar, we're recommending solar. If they can't do that, or if the building isn't situated, my house isn't situated for solar, if there's a reason, then that's what I meant. If we have an ordinance that's already on the books, like that CND you were talking about, construction and debris, we have ordinances on that. So they have to comply with those, the ordinances that are already established.
And just to clarify, Councilman Rutherford, this is not a contract with any developer. It is what Council President Mathieu Brown said, the ordinance controls. What this is doing is adopting an overlay zone that you're entitled to do once it's an area in need of redevelopment. So that's what it's doing. And so, don't you, the redeveloper agreement comes later, and, and it, it may come soon, but it's, this is not, this is higher rules and the planning board's recommendation to you. And again, Council President Mathieu Brown was correct. If the ordinance says X, the ordinance controls.
So, so on this question of feasibility, that, that word is used with regard to stormwater management. And I, I imagine, as an attorney, Mr. Trink, you would appreciate that there could be a disagreement on what's feasible.
No, because there's regulations that will control that.
Right, and, and, and again.
There's no disagree, there's no way we could disagree on what feasible is?
Not on stormwater management.
Yeah, a- a- again, if there's a government entity that regulates it, they're going to call it, they're going to determine it. So again, when, when I see, again, if we're talking about page twenty-seven, the words that say, to the extent feasible, that, if that's the four words you're referring to, again, that, that is going to be determined by the experts and the priests, and the planning board will do that interpretation when the, when the proposal is before that. That doesn't happen until after you adopt. That doesn't happen until after you adopt this on second reading, if you so choose. There's always gonna be some interpretive aspect, as you know, with regard to anything. But that's again, why you pick the ordinance, you pick the overlay plan, and then once there's a redeveloper, they didn't have to file a, a formal application and the planning board has to hear the proofs and make the determination.
And they have to follow statutes and ordinances regardless of anything that's in that document.
If it's not in the statute or the ordinance and it's a, and it's left up to the question of feasible, my understanding of what Mr. Trink just said is that reasonable people could disagree on what feasible is.
I didn't say that. I didn't say that. I said, again.
You said there was always some, you know, interpretation with regard to.
Ca- ca- there is interpreting anything there. I, I, I'm guess not sure. If you're referring to the four words on page 27, to me, the issue i- i- again, to the extent that there needs to be any analysis that in the end, the planning board is gonna hear that issue. Um, and, and again, as, as Councilwoman McCartney has said, there are independent regulatory authorities that look at stormwater. Again, Mr. Laporte is, I think, still on the call, since you're asking about stormwater, and he really is an expert on that, he could probably pretty easily uh, elucidate that. But uh, again, I, I have never heard of an issue where because of that, it becomes an issue. But uh, Mr. Laporte, I see he's muted, but he might be helpful.
I, I think just loo- looking at this just a little bit differently, of the 29, let's call them choices that may be out there, some of them really aren't choices because they are covered by a statute or ordinance already. So they, those are set aside. I don't know how many are left that are real choices of those 29. There may be a significant number, but it, it's, the choices real, for the developer really aren't 29. There's something less than that.
Well, to Ken's point, there's also something in there about sidewalks and pedestrian paths. That's already part of our complete street policy. So the com- complete street policy will supersede that. They have to comply with that. We do want connectivity between the buildings, between the shopping center. So they have to comply. Going back to the stormwater management, the two paragraphs before those four words, to the extent feasible, uh, confirms that all development shall comply with the sections. We have a stormwater ordinance control. Plus, right after that, it says, the area shall adhere to the New Jersey Stormwater Management Best Management Practices. So they all, they have to comply. They have to comply. The next paragraph said, to the extent possible, they have choices there. They could either do it with a rain garden or a bioswale or green roofs or that permeable pavement. So those are the choices. They're going to have to choose something to comply with the stormwater management plan.
I think, I, I wanna interject something here in, in reading the ordinance. Again, um, the purpose of the ordinance and the ordinance for the general public that I'm reading is 25, section 51.16. Um, and perhaps um, a better understanding is to um, read the first sentence. The purpose of this ordinance is to incorporate a sustainability checklist as part of the major minor site plan. What we're looking at before us tonight is a redevelopment plan, not the actual site plan that will come once the process has gotten started. So when the site plan, um, as indicated in the ordinance, is presented before the, the planning board, that's when all of these um, are, are, are in essence, um, you know, um, held to that standard. I, I'm looking at all of the lists of sustainability for the, for um, for this ordinance, and they do reference that in this development, redevelopment plan. Um, so while it may not be um, spelled out in this redevelopment plan, you know, it has to be in the site plan. I think there's a difference between.
And we just approved that with the master plan when we adopted our master plan in January. That sustainable checklist was part of that master plan. And that sustainable checklist has to be attached to every application. And we are expanding it, enhancing it with, with this sustainability plan attached to this, the amendment to this ordinance that we're reviewing tonight.
Um, I, I think it's time for us to.
I wanted to, I'm just, again, looking back at my notes too about the jitney. That was one of the questions that was asked um, by the public this evening. Um, that is also in here. That uh, there is an internal circulation, there is an actual circulation plan, plus we have in our master plan a circulation element. But this says, the West Orange jitney shuttle service provides a commuter link to the Orange Mountain and South Orange train stations. As part of the redevelopment of the site, the developer shall work with the township to supplement or expand the jitney service if necessary. In addition, a shuttle from within the development of the Essex Green bus drop, bus shop, sorry, bus stop shall be provided to coordinate with the jitney and to provide access to the shopping center and bus at other li- times of the day. So the jitney service is built into this plan.
And, and I did wanna add to that, the mayor wanted me to stress that um, this has also been part of the discussion uh, with, with the Albert Group with regard to 46 Mount Pleasant Avenue, the existing library site, that they, as part of that approval to put senior housing on the existing library site, uh, they, they will uh, have uh, the auxiliary space for the library, number one. And number two, they, it helped them get additional points on their 9% tax credits to disclose that they are going to contribute financial support as well as a million dollars, uh, which should not be forgotten. That's part of our match for the library. But financial support for an ongoing operation of the jitney that will circulate people uh, to the new library site. So the mayor had, is well aware of that and is totally committed to that. And that will be a part and parcel of the library site.
Councilman Rutherford.
Uh, I'm, again, I could be wrong. Uh, I believe when we um, did the initial agreement with um, Edison Lofts, there was a jitney uh, as a part of that agreement that was supposed to be provided by uh, the developers that has not happened. Is that accurate?
If the need was there, that was a, that was a condition of the application. If the need was there, then they would provide the jitney. Right now.
Yeah. So, so just real quick, councilman. Um, so the Edison Lofts, there's a handful of people that are utilizing the service. So um, the township being that the um, the Route 6 literally drives right by that building. So to accommodate the couple of residents that the jitney service is available for townwide, um, they are able to hop on the jitney. Um, cause it, it already goes there. There was room on the jitney. And Mr. Laporte, you know, he could attest to this because he arranged it. For any reason, there wasn't room. Uh, that'd be a different conversation. But that jitney bus drives right by that site. And it's a handful of people. And uh, it's not even close to the need because people just weren't commuting to, to New York that are, that are living there.
In this.
That is a condition of the, so Bill, to your point though, that is a condition of the application.
And, and it's my understanding that there, that whatever we have now is a workaround, um, that the initial condition, or at least as it was presented initially, uh, did not materialize. Secondly, um, in this particular paragraph that's highlighted, it's on different pages depending on which one you're looking at. I'm looking at the hand, uh, the uh, document that was submitted with the um,
As an amendment, the exhibit.
Yeah. Is it Exhibit A? Is it the only exhibit? I don't know.
It is.
But page 19 of this, uh, it may not be 19 on yours, but it's page 19 regarding the West Orange jitney shuttle service. It says, um, as part of the redevelopment of the site, the redevelopers shall work with the township to supplement or expand the jitney service if necessary. So there's a lot of conditions in that sentence. To supplement or expand, who gets to determine which one? If necessary, how do we determine necessary? And then it says, in addition, a shuttle from within the development to the Essex Green bus stop shall be provided to coordinate with the jitney. Who shall provide it? Is that on us or is that on whoever the developer may be?
So you're looking at the, this is the redevelopment plan for Executive Drive and Rooney. What I was referring to is uh, is the redevelopment for the existing library site, 46 uh, Mount Pleasant Avenue. That is where we, what the, what the mayor wants to ensure is that people who typically use the site on Mount Pleasant are able to get to the new improved site on, on Executive Drive Rooney. So that's where we intend to put the onus, as well as to get the, uh, this developer, uh, when we get that far, to uh, consider contributing also.
So.
Okay. So I think what Bill is saying is that we need to clarify that language there. Because what it says is that the redevelopers shall work with the township to supplement or expand the jitney. This is now Executive Drive. In addition, a shuttle from within the development to the bus stop shall be provided. So right there, shall be provided by whom? Is that what you're saying? To clarify that right there?
Correct.
Right. But I, I think we're talking about different concerns because clearly, if you have 425 apartment units at 102 on your Executive Drive, certainly, if you wanna uh, maximize your rentals at that site and the bus stop, as you've referred to it, Councilwoman McCartney, is all the way up by uh, Fridays. Clearly, it would be in your best interest to provide that as an amenity. What we are more concerned about, that I think the community or certainly the mayor is concerned is, we want people who have been using the library downtown to have is equal access to the centrally located new improved uh, library on Executive Drive. And that's what we're focused on. And we um, have that commitment from the redeveloper of the existing library site, the Albert Group.
So, so I think that we are having two separate uh, jitney conversations.
Exactly.
One from the current library and then one from this plan.
Right.
Right. You're absolutely right.
That's where the confusion is.
Right.
So what we're saying is that we want the redeveloper to provide this shuttle, where it says that he is going, he, he or she, whoever the redeveloper is, is going to supplement or expand the jitney, that they are going to do that. That needs to run, that needs to run throughout that whole paragraph.
Again, there are different redevelopers. Again, as you know, we're, we have a redeveloper for the existing library site. And then there's the redeveloper who we have not yet chosen and are not yet there until we have a redevelopment plan, can have a redeveloper to get a redevelopment plan. We have a redevelopment plan on uh, 46 Mount Pleasant, and that redeveloper is the Albert Group that has been approved by the town council.
We're not really discussing that though. We're talking about.
Right. You're absolutely right. That's all I was clarifying was, that is where our focus has been. We believe this internal, as Councilwoman McCartney, jitney service is gonna be accommodated by the people who run the 425 apartment units. That's, that's their amenity. Uh, we're, our concern is the jitney that we, as, as, again, as Councilwoman Castellino was talking about, we have jitneys that run throughout the town, and we wanna put special service that will take people up and down Mount Pleasant to the new library site. That's, that's where we're focused on. Uh, so again.
I think we're looking for clarity in that paragraph to make sure that it doesn't just end. That a shuttle from within the development will be provided by the redeveloper, shall be provided to coordinate with the jitney. That's what we're saying. Is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying. I.
That's what, okay, yeah. I read that to mean that the redeveloper was doing that, but if we need to put that language in there to make it clear.
Yeah, just tighten it up.
Okay, that, that can be done. That's done. That's easy.
Thank you, council colleagues. Um, we do have this coming up for a second reading. So if the council wants further discussion, happy to um, have another public uh, workshop to further flush this out. Um, happy to do that um, in advance of second reading.
Council President, I just wanna make sure that do, we, did we in fact take a vote on, on introduction on first reading? I just wanna.
Yes.
Yes. We did.
Four hours ago.
Just checking.
Or so it seems.
Madam Clark, please.
Yes. 2633 dash 21, an ordinance amending chapter 15, rent controls, section 15 dash 3, rent leveling board subsection 15 dash 3.1, rent leveling board creation, organization of the revised ordinances of West Orange to add a council liaison to the rent leveling board's membership. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
I moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, but I had a question.
Okay, can we go through the vote first?
Yes, yes, yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Mathieu Brown?
Yes. Councilwoman, your question?
Thank you. Um.
I, I have to go back to what Mr. Kizer had. I, I know you introduced it, but did you adopt the ordinance 2632 dash 21 on first reading?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then, and, and therefore it will be scheduled for second reading.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, but wait, all right, then let's go back because what we, the conversation we just had is that on page 19, we're in that sentence that says, in addition, a shuttle from within the development to the Essex Green bus stop shall be provided, we need to insert, by the redeveloper to coordinate with the jitney and to provide access to the shopping center and a bus at other times of the day.
Okay. Um, so I did offer um, a, a workshop to flush out anything else that the council members wanted in advance of, um, you know, in case there is something else that needed.
We, we have to advertise.
There is, and I don't, yeah.
We have to advertise it. So again, if, if, if the, if, if the, we'll call it friendly amendment or whatnot by Councilwoman McCartney is acceptable to the majority of the council, then that is the version that we'll send back to the planning board for them to approve, and we will appropriately advertise it and notice it.
Council President, do we need a motion for the amendment?
I think that is probably the appropriate.
I, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I wanna ask uh, Councilman Rutherford if there were any, if, if there was anything else that he felt that needed to be flushed out.
So there, there are several things.
That's why I wanted to have a workshop, seeing that it is 11 o'clock tonight and we still have a few other uh, items to take care of. I would like to um, have a set, a work session and we can flush that out.
Well, can we first find out if the majority of us have the desire for a work session before we schedule one?
I mean, you.
I have no further questions.
And, and it's.
I'm sorry, I, I don't understand what the challenge is.
The challenge is, I, I'll tell you, the challenge is simple. We are on an extremely tight timeline with the Library Bond Construction Act. If we do not bring this back to you for second reading, for your consideration and get approval, we will not be able to show the, the, the uh, state treasurer that we have site control of 10 Rooney. Without site control of 10 uh, Rooney under contract, which we cannot execute until you consider and approve the redevelopment plan, then we will lose the 3.1 million dollars or we will be in serious jeopardy. So that is the issue.
So, so. Councilman Rutherford, I'm sorry.
So, I, and I can appreciate that. However, I think the way we got here um, is fraught with challenges. I think the question and answer sessions provided uh, with Ms. Grule at the planning board were completely wholly unsatisfactory. Um, I think the structure of asking those questions was unsatisfactory. I think there are plenty of residents who feel like their concerns and questions were not heard or answered. And now here we are trying to push through something, again, in a quick fashion to meet a, a deadline when, if we would have taken the time to flesh out all of these things with, in the appropriate order, we would not be under this deadline right now. So, you know, there are tremendous challenges with this particular project. Um, I, I voted to uh, introduce it on, on first reading. Everyone in this meeting, everyone in town knows I am not supportive of this project in general. And there are too many problems that have not been addressed for me to be supportive of the project. And unless those are addressed, I cannot support it. And the people in town. And the people in town that don't support it deserve to have their questions answered and their concerns addressed. Um, and so, you know.
We have a public workshop there. That's not the format.
The opportunity to have those questions answered on their behalf.
Well, we could do that between now and next Wednesday because that's when the planning board meets.
Councilman, Councilwoman Castellino?
So I appreciate it. I don't mind having a workshop because I think we could also at that workshop maybe hash out some of these other ordinances that are for question because my brain's starting to, to hurt for to have, continue that conversation this evening. But I just want to go back to the last meeting because I, I, I take offense to that because I, I ran that meeting. And all questions were answered that were appropriate to that meeting and for that study. A lot of the questions that came up that were not answered, which, which we did not, may not have been addressed in regards to pilot and to other nuances that weren't appropriate for that evening. So like as we go along with each step, I have no problem taking the time doing the diligence that, that needs to be done and make sure everyone's question gets answered. But for that last meeting, please be mindful that was about that particular study. So to approve the study, so not, not to talk about pilots, uh, which has, to this date, hasn't been proposed yet. So with that, with the, I don't mind having workshop along as it works within the timeframe of, of second reading. So that's where I stand with this.
So again, Council President, again, if, if there is a amendment that was suggested tonight that the majority of the council believes should be inserted on page nineteen or page, yeah, page nineteen, it sounds to me like Councilwoman McCartney had proposed specific language and that Councilwoman Williams, Councilwoman Williams was willing to move that. If, if, if that is the case, then you can add it right now. And then the bottom line is it'll go back to the planning board next week and then it'll come back to you on second reading. And again, to get to the issue of if there's still questions, just like we did on December fifteenth, Council President and the majority of the council asked Ms. Gruel to be at the December fifteenth meeting. If you want her here for second reading on this ordinance, then she'll be on the Zoom call for second reading. And any questions that the council president or council members have, she'll be prepared to answer.
My, my concern at having her at second reading is if there are any additional changes that any council member wants to make at that point, if they're substantive, they won't be made.
You, you, but then you'll have the. You're, you're, you're correct. You, if it's, if they're substantive, if they're, if they're not substantive, then they can be made. But if they are substantive, then you'll have to vote it down and start again. But again, if we, the purpose of the planning board was to do the job of making a recommendation, they made changes to the plan that higher grill proposed. And that's what's before you tonight. So again, I, 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 I respect and obviously it'll be the council's determination. But it does seem at this point that I guess it seems like you've already approved it to come back on second reading and so that we can go forward. Or if, if a majority of the council wants to tweak some language tonight, we can do that also. But again, a work session means we're not coming back on second reading until after you have your work session and until it goes back to the planning board. And then it'll come back to you if and when, whatever day that might be.
So I wanted to say that when you brought up the point about, you know, as Michelle said at last meeting, a lot of questions were asked of Susan Gruel about this plan. The planning board, the same thing. I have my notes from the planning board. A lot of the questions were about the abatements and pilots. And that was not what was before us.
I, I, I don't want to assume that that's what Councilman Rutherford was referring to when he said that there were questions that he still had that were not answered. I don't think it's a fair assumption to say that they were about the pilot.
And they're not. There are other issues in, in addition to the pilot, but two things quickly. One, we know that a pilot is going to be introduced at some point for this project. So let's stop pretending like it's not. It will be. That is the process you went through the first time before the court rejected it. So we know that's where we're going. And we need to be diligent about how we approach that process. And that gets back to my first point. I know questions were allowed to be asked. But they were, all of the questions were forced to be asked before any answers were heard. There was no opportunity for follow up questions. Kevin Malanga, who is the most authoritative resident in town on this matter, was not given the ability to ask follow up questions and his time was limited. And even during public comment at the meeting, uh, uh, Councilwoman Castellino just referenced. All of the public comments were given, all of the questions were asked. And then we listened to answers, some of which dealt directly with those questions and some of which didn't. So there is clearly a gap between the information that's requested by residents and the information that's been provided and the opportunity to hash that out. And that's all anyone is looking for. Listen. If, if, I know there's a lot of support for, for the library. I am very supportive of the library. I want a new library. If it ends up being that's how, at, at the end of this process, that that is the best way to go, then we won't have to worry about folks who, who did not agree with this because they had plenty of time to ask their questions, to have their concerns heard and addressed. But if we go forward with this and do not allow that opportunity for those questions to be heard and answered and the concerns to be addressed, then all of those folks who are against it will line up with Mr. Malanga and will be right back in another lawsuit and will end up spending more taxpayer dollars fighting this thing or seeing it through to the end when we can address it upfront.
I'm sorry. I, I, I think that there, when I said public workshop, I meant for the council. It wasn't an opportunity to, to.
I understood you. I wasn't asking for the public to come back. I'm just talking about the structure of the questioning that took place before now, right? That structure left a lot to be desired. And, and so there are some folks that are, and I am one of them. I, I, you know, I don't feel like all of my questions have been, have been addressed. I don't, and I think if we stick, stick around till one or two in the morning, I'll still probably have some questions, but.
And again, Councilman Rutherford, I assume you would put on the record that I and Mr. Gross and Mr. Hanley have already spent three or four hours trying to, and we are willing, as, as was said earlier, to spend as much time as you or anyone else. So again, the question of the structure of, of the questioning of Ms. Gruel is not the question. Because again, and, and neither is Mr. Malanga. Because again, if, if you so choose to want to look back to how much that person has cost this town in terms of time or money, it is not because we have not made every effort to be totally transparent. It may be because we have legitimate differences. It may be because, yes, we do strongly believe that the opportunities presented to this township at this point, based upon all of the pieces of this puzzle, will not come back in any of our lives. So that'll be a decision you have every right to make and you've been very transparent saying you're against it. And I, I totally respect that, but it is not fair to say that the process that either former Council President Castellino filed or that the planning board, that is an autonomous body that we have never directed as to how they follow their process. That, that it is not fair to say that that process implicates anything about what you are doing tonight. Tonight is whether or not you accept the recommendation for an overlay zone in an improved redevelopment area. I know that you don't agree that it should have been an improved redevelopment area. I agree with you that one of the tools in the toolbox that will come back to this council, if you adopt this plan, if you adopt this plan on second reading, will be whether or not there will be a financial agreement. And you will evaluate that. You have scrutinized it. We will give you every shred of information on that. And we will do a separate presentation of that for the council and public as we've done in the past. And, and I totally respect your, your, your position, but what I'm just saying is a matter of procedure. Tonight is whether or not you adopt the plan on first reading, which I understand you've done. And now it'll go back to the planning board and then it'll come back to you on second reading. If anybody wants to make changes to the plan tonight, then tonight we certainly can do that. So again, I, I don't, I don't, and, and let's not forget, this plan has been on the public website since I believe January, the first Friday in January, I think January eighth. So there's nobody that sprung with this plan. I made sure that after Council President, uh, the night that the council approved the area need to re, redevelopment, they adopted and gave higher rule the go ahead to do the plan. And they did that work and it was posted on the town websites. I believe it was January fifth or January eighth. Uh, so this is not a new plan. The only thing that got amended was what Councilwoman McCartney referred to concerning the, the green issues.
So can, Council President, can I respond to that? So I, I absolutely stipulate that we spent, I don't know how many, it was at, at least three hours or so.
Talking about some of the details. Thank you for your time.
No, no, I, I, I expect to spend more time, right? And I appreciate that. We scratched the surface. We didn't really get into, and I don't want to go down that road, but there were still questions left from that session. And we didn't even get into some other aspects of this particular development that are problematic for me. So there are questions and I'm not trying to disparage Councilwoman Castellino or, or the planning board or anyone else. What I am saying is, similar to what you just said, you may have legitimate differences. I assume your differences are legitimate unless and until I see something that says otherwise. But as of now, I assume your differences are legitimate. But those legitimate differences still have to be hashed out.
I have no legitimate differences. What we're talking about is process. That's all that I think Council President, which I respect, is just talking about the process and the question is, is there approval tonight on first reading so we can go forward to go back to the planning board and then bring it back to you on second reading? Or, or does the council decide at this point it wants to step back or whatever and do a work session? And therefore there would not be approval on first reading. So we, that's really the process. And that's.
So my, my vote to approve that was because I expected us to hash out some things tonight to our satisfaction. I don't feel like that's happening.
Okay, well, that's.
Councilwoman Castellino and then.
If, if, if my colleague needs time, you know, we just spent a half hour. We could have been going over his other recommendations. So if you have recommendations, I, I'll stay here two o'clock in the morning. Because I, I mean, I'm fine with moving forward to second reading on that recommendation. I'm just be, I'm just being courteous to you, Councilman. I thought you had a good recommendation. If you have some more, I have no problem with that if, you know, but I, I'm fine with moving forward to second reading. So if a workshop is going to slow down the process, you know, again, I'm fine because I've read this. I've, I've asked my questions. I'm comfortable with it. So I'm, I'm ready to move forward. But if you are not comfortable with a couple of items and you want us to tweak language, then now's the time. If you have that ready, just present it to us. We want to work with you, but you, you, you know, if you have it ready, just present it to us.
Okay, so let's just go back to lead certification. Why would we put ourselves in the position of being professionals to decide which of those certific, of those items are, should be included in the project instead of allowing the professionals? Who, I mean, lead certification is accepted industry wide. Why would we want to say we don't want it? How could we say that we're being progressive and forward thinking and taking into consideration all of the needs of the residents? And we're not requiring that. We're going to require all the components of it or some of the components of it and not, and not the certification. I don't care if it costs them a hundred thousand or a million dollars. Doesn't care. I don't care. They're getting, whoever the developer is, they will make a decision if they want to do it or not. I think lead certification should be mandated and we should not be in the role of deciding which parts of that should be included in the plan. Let's start there.
So what language recommendation and what page do you want the, the language changed?
So again, what I would recommend to have process here is that the councilman make a motion to amend the plan to, and I think he's referring to page twenty eight.
Twenty eight.
Twenty eight, again, I'm looking at, as Councilman Rutherford referred to, the, the most recent version that came yesterday. So again, I think. I'm sorry.
No, you're right. I'm, I'm going to the.
So again, Councilman. Council, Councilman Rutherford is moving to make lead certification a mandatory requirement of this plan. So I think, Council President, you would ask if there's a second for that amendment.
Do we have a second for that amendment? I, I second that amendment.
Okay, speaking on behalf of the administration, the, the, the plan specifically provides at the recommendation of the planner and, again, Councilwoman McCartney could talk about the planning board, a process by doing it. And, and the concept here of obtaining approval is to obtain a project that occurs. It is not to create a false narrative that can never be implemented or to create not, again, a poison pill. The, the goal here is to get the benefits of as green a project as possible that works. And that's why when higher grill, when you retain experienced planner and they do a plan and they go before the planning board and the planning board reports out what they reported out, the administration's position is to, to now add components or requirements, especially when the planning board will be the final arbiter of these issues, is only creating more obstacles to getting this, this project done. So again, it's your vote and I, I recommend you vote and decide if you want to add that requirement.
We just did. It was three to two.
No, 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 no. I have to take a roll call vote.
Councilwoman McCartney.
Well, that's what just happened.
That's not what happened. That was just.
I didn't take a vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So now you have to vote on the amendment.
Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Uh, no.
Councilwoman McCartney?
No.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
You're muted.
You're muted, Ms. Williams.
No.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
The motion failed.
Anything else?
Any other amendments?
Sorry, Councilwoman McCartney, I, I, I can ask.
So.
Mister Councilman Rutherford?
So here's, here's, here's what else, all right? This is exactly the type of contentiousness in trying to get to a good result that we do not need. I am required by the oath I took to honor the obligations, the que, the questions, the considerations, the concerns of the residents of this town. And they have real issues with this process from beginning to end. How it was immediately after the judge struck it down, the designation immediately represented, the process started over again. We have been rushing this to the detriment of the satisfaction of the residents. You might be able to convince me or others with a thoughtful process, consider dialogue, a reasonable approach to be supportive of the project. But by pushing it and forcing it and then stepping on the council president when she's trying to do her job and trying to say who's going to vote for what and who has voted for what, that is absolutely not needed. It is not wanted. I'm offended by it. I think if there's anybody still watching, they're probably offended too. The process needs improvement. No one that I've spoken to that is in disagreement with this plan feels like they've been heard, included, or even understood in some cases. And that I think is our responsibility to make sure that they do. And I don't think we're living up to it right now. I'm going to put myself on mute.
Thank you, Mister Councilman Rutherford. And I have to agree, and, and I'm not going to call out. And I have to agree, um, and, and I'm not going to call out names, but you know, it's, as, as Council President, I run the meeting, you know, and I know that I'm not as experienced as some of you are, and I'm going to go through the process as I am comfortable going through the process. It really did just get contentious for absolutely no reason. Councilman Rutherford has the, the, the responsibility and obligation to ask the questions that he's asking. I understand that there is a timeline with respect to the, um, grant from the state. However, the very dismissive, um, responses that some, some have provided and interjected rudely is, is not warranted, appreciated, and, and certainly very offensive. So I'm going to ask that we redirect our energies in this meeting, moving forward as professionals, colleagues that we are. And, um, Madam Clerk, can you move on to the next?
Yes.
President, I'm very sorry if I offended anyone in any way.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Sure. Twenty six thirty four dash twenty one, an ordinance amending Chapter Two Administration, Section Two Point, um, sorry, two dash forty seven, Environmental Commission subsection two dash forty seven point two M, membership of the revised ordinances of West Orange to add a council liaison to the commission's membership. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
I'm a second.
Uh, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Uh, yes, of course, but, uh, hopefully we're changing all of these ordinances because especially the one I'm looking at right now says two members, one year term expiring December two thousand fourteen, December two thousand fifteen. Three members will expire December two thousand sixteen. And if we are not going to have that discussion about revising all of these ordinances and setting up the structure for all of these ordinances, then, uh, yeah, just let's add a council liaison.
Thank you.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Twenty six thirty five dash twenty one, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter Twenty Streets and Sidewalks and Subsections twenty dash one of the revised general ordinances of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
I'm a second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council Pres- President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Twenty six thirty six dash twenty one, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing the employee's status as a township employee. And under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel, is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
I'm a second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Pending matters, new matters, council discussion, uh, council appointment by consensus, rent leveling board, council president?
Okay, thank you. So I forwarded to, um, all of my council colleagues, the, um, information for the two all current alternate members for the zoning board whose, uh, appointment has already expired. Bart Pincel is alternate number one and Dr. Michael Straker, alternate number four. They have, um, sought reappointment to those positions. I shared with you their resumes and, um, I am going to recommend for their reappointments unless there is discussion.
I'll second that.
I was going to second that, okay. If that was a motion, if that was a motion that you just made, Council President, yes.
Okay, hold on one second. Okay, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Councilman Rutherford?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes.
Can we go back to the rent leveling board? It was listed on the agenda, but I believe it was going to be postponed because the council has not come up with a.
Council consensus.
Correct.
Yes, uh, so we can, we can go back, um, after a discussion. Um, we don't have, we haven't had that discussion, but there should be a council consensus appointment for the rent leveling board. Um, we can revisit this during our next, uh.
Okay.
Council meeting.
I think I know someone that may, may want to volunteer.
Okay.
I'll find out tomorrow, make the recommendation.
Thank you.
So can I ask a question about this too? With the rent leveling board, um, is, I had mentioned this before about having people from the administration serve on these boards. Is Pete Smeraldo as the new housing authority on this board and should he be?
He is, and I believe that the, the ordinance, I don't have it in front of me right now. Hold on a second.
Okay, I do.
Let me get to that page. And if, uh, Ms. Kizer, you're on, um, let me get my glasses.
Think he has to be in his capacity, correct?
Yeah, I, I believe so. I mean, he.
I believe so.
The truth, the truth, the truth of the matter is, to my knowledge, and I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent on this, but I believe we have enforced our rent leveling ordinance in the last, I mean, since I've been doing this, it's been twenty years. I mean, I don't, i- if we have, I'm not aware of it. Um, I, I, I don't think I've heard of a rent leveling board meeting. If one's taken place, I, I, I wasn't aware of it.
Not in twenty years.
It was expired.
But it hasn't expired, it's still on the books, it's just nobody's enforced it. Nope, we, the, the, there, there are serious questions and I, and I know that, that, um, forgetting her name, Tabira Kabira, um, has, you know, has a serious interest in this stuff and, and apparently has a lot of knowledge about, um, rent control from her work experience. Um, and she may be able to, you know, to help out here with, but, um, I don't believe it's been enforced. Um, I don't think we get copies of leases. And if we don't get copies of leases, I don't know how we enforce it. So there's a lot to talk about here and, but it goes well beyond who's going to be appointed to be a, 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 a council appointment or a council liaison or whatever. I mean, it's.
So Ken, excuse me.
Go ahead.
Uh, Council President, in this ordinance though, there isn't any mission statement here. It says that the purpose of the ordinance is to add a position, but it doesn't, it doesn't have anywhere in here or what the purpose of the commission is. It's, you know, we talk about, A, hereby created a rent leveling board shall consist of seven members.
Well, w- w- well, the rent leveling board's been, been an ordinance on our books for, forever. I mean, for, for a long, long time.
In my twenty years, we haven't used it, but it doesn't even say what the, its purpose is in this ordinance.
Just to add that position, that's all.
Right, that's, the question is, what's the purpose of the rent leveling board? If we haven't met in twenty years.
It's in the ordinance, it's, it's, it's in the ordinance.
Okay, I have the ordinance here and there isn't anything in here.
Saying is that there is, it's not spelled out, um, the purpose of the rent leveling board. The purpose, uh, that's placed here is just to appoint a council liaison to the membership of the rent leveling board.
Right, but there's no mission statement within it.
That, well, it's in the, it's in the code book.
Can I have a copy of it right here? There isn't anything in the ordinance that explains.
When you say the ordinance, you're talking about the ordinance.
This is an amendment.
It's an amendment.
It's just an amendment to the, to a bigger ordinance. It only deals with one section of the ordinance, I believe. The ordinance is many pages in our, in our code book.
Um, it just, just a high level, um, the rent leveling board has not met, um, when, when we recently reinstated this ordinance because there was, um, for whatever reason that I don't understand, um, a, a date where it went dormant. But we did, uh, reinstitute this ordinance, um, several months ago. And the rent control ordinance is, um, a board is supposed to meet whenever there are any issues for any tenants with their rent, um, whether it's increased beyond that. Um, the fact that they haven't met, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it is not, um, a reason not to, um, make sure that our residents know that there is a recourse for them. Um, and I know my appointee, um, as an attorney in Newark, um, for the, um, housing authority, is very well versed in this, does want to have, um, an informational session. And I asked her if, um, we could do that once all of our appointments were made to the rent leveling board so that there is awareness, that people do know that there is, um, a resource for them here in town, to seek assistance should they need it. And I understand what Ken is saying, that there is no, um, there's no process that has been created or implemented to even ensure this ordinance, but, um, that is up to us to make sure that the compliance to the ordinance is not that. This one is to appoint a liaison so that we can have, you know, start having some discussions about how that is moving forward or how it's not. That's what that's for.
Great, it's a great idea, yep, to inform the community.
But it, it's also a board where if their rents are increased beyond what's statutorily allowed, that they have a recourse for that.
And again, we have ordinances that control that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you for that. So we will go back once, um, Councilwoman Castellino, if you can share, uh, with us who, after you have a discussion with respect to who your, um, you think might want to volunteer for that?
Yeah.
Uh, we'll list it for, um, the next, um, town council meeting.
Volunteer for the rent leveling board as a liaison?
No, 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 as a.
As a consensus.
The town, the council gets to appoint one person, right?
Sorry.
As a whole.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Yes, so, um, that we can do at a later time. Um, thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. There was, um, I know the hour is late. And it's certainly not something that I don't think any of us anticipated, but the discussions I think were necessary, particularly with, um, the resolutions, the ordinances that were on, um, on our agenda. I do want to have council discussion with you with respect to how we're moving forward with our, um, with our meetings, the length of time, um, of our meetings. Over the last two years, I did go back and look, we are having an average of four hours, um, of meetings. And, um, I want us to figure out a way on how to be more effective in those meetings so that we are not taking four hours. I know we have discussed having workshops in advance. Uh, obviously they have to be public, um, to discuss matters that will take longer, um, that will be on our agenda. Having, uh, those conference, um, meetings with the administration to help us sort some things out in advance of the town council meetings would be beneficial to not just us, but the residents who have to stay on as late as they stay on to watch. So that is something that I want, um, council to consider. Um, I know Councilwoman Castellino, um, mentioned it during her term as president wanting to do that, um, when there is a need. So I am hopeful that that is something that, um, council will agree to. Councilwoman, uh, Williams?
Yes, I actually jotted this down as a recommendation, uh, to do just that thing, which is shorten our meetings. And, um, I just wanted to understand, um, if it's precedent, just how we function. But I did check and in other municipalities, um, five minutes is not gifted to residents or anyone who wants to come and speak before the council. So I would like to recommend for our consideration, um, that we consider reducing public comments to three minutes.
So that is, that, that, that was next, my next, uh, request to the council. But I also have, um, looked at our neighboring communities and our ordinance as well calls for three minutes, uh, for public comment, five minutes for ordinance discussion. So that is something that I would like council to, um, support. I want to say to the public that it is not a matter of, uh, not listening to the public. A lot of the things, I don't need these anymore. A lot of the, um, matters that we discussed here during council meetings, we have already received, um, emails about, have responded to emails about and are happy to discuss them, uh, here in public. However, five minutes is an excessively long time. Um, I think three minutes for council is, is, is appropriate even when we're responding to public comments because we too can be a bit, uh, winded in responding. So I want to, um, pose that to you as well. I believe we do have, uh, support from the administration on trying to make sure that we just have more, um, effective, shorter professional meetings. So, um, is there a majority or consensus from the council? And can, um, I don't know if this is something that we do now or do we have support to shorten our public comment period to three minutes for public comment and five for ordinance readings?
Um, I mean, what's, what's involved is, is modifying the council rules, which have been established by ordinance and they've been established by ordinance for, for many, many years in West Orange. Um, the Faulkner Act actually permits, in a mayor council, former government permits council rules to be adopted by resolution. For whatever reason, um, a governing body many years ago decided to use an ordinance and, and not a resolution. So it takes a couple of meetings to actually affect the changes. I guess if, if we can develop some consenses, um, about time limits and, and things like that, any changes to the council rules, I'm certainly willing and, and able to, uh, draft modifications to those rules, um, and give them to all of you as a proposal. But it would be helpful to have your discussion and input as to what changes you want to make. Um, and you know, going, getting back to, and I don't want to take much time because it is so late. But as council, as, uh, Councilman McCartney points out, that we have a lot of ordinances that, that, you know, or have dead features in them, um, things that haven't been used in, in a long time. We have that in the council rules. We talk about we're having one meeting in July and August. Well, in recent years, we've also had only one meeting in December. Maybe we want to change the rule, um, so that we're acting consistently with the rule. And I'm sure there's, there are other things in here that are like that and I, I, you know, I have gone through it to some extent. I'm not going to talk about other things now, but I'm happy to throw something out if you, if you want. For, for consideration, but in the me, I mean, it would be helpful to have your input from, input from all of you as to any changes you think would be appropriate.
Council President?
Madam Clerk?
Um, I wanted to just comment on that.
Councilwoman, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk had her, her hand up.
Yeah, I, I just, I thought that the, I thought this was already in the ordinance, that it was at the discretion of the council president to, it would be three minutes, but at the discretion of the council president to extend it to five for public comment. And then it was five minutes for second reading ordinances. Unless I'm mistaken.
You're, you're mistaken. That's not what the ordinance said. And in fact, our ordinance has an internal inconsistency because it talks about five minute, in one section, it talks about five minutes for public comment and in another section, it talks about three minutes for, um, resolutions and before each resolution and five minutes before, uh, before adoption of an ordinance. So there's some internal inconsistencies that need to be dealt with.
Okay.
But it's, the council president, um, has no more power than, than anybody else, except that she does run the meeting. Uh, but if, if you're going to make changes in rules, she can't do it on her own. It's got to be by majority vote of the council.
No, I meant that if it was on the books already and it's at her, I thought it read that it was at her discretion to extend it or not.
Does, doesn't read that way.
Okay, thank you.
Council President?
I'm sorry, Councilwoman McCartney, I'm sorry, Mr. Sayers.
Okay.
Councilwoman, uh, McCartney?
I was just going to comment that we spent, uh, I think the timing, uh, to suggest this is, um, oh, odd, I, I can't think of another word, that we just spent forty five minutes going through the process, talking about how the public wasn't heard and now we're suggesting, um, I know that's not the intent to say that the public's not being heard, but I just, it's just commentary.
I, I think, I think that the point that, uh, that Councilman Rutherford made was completely different, but, um.
Thank you, Mr. Kizer.
Leave that to him.
Mr. Sayers?
Yeah, did we approve? Yeah. Did we approve the zoning board alternative members also? Did you guys?
Yes, yes.
Oh, you did? I'm sorry. I didn't get that.
This is what happens when it gets late.
Board also, right?
The rent leveling board was postponed to February 9th. Until they have a, you know, consensus on who they're going to appoint.
Okay. Post in February.
And then, Council President.
Councilman Rutherford had his hand up. I'm sorry.
So I, I am for more time for pub, for the residents to speak and less for us to respond. If time has to be cut, it should be cut from us, but not from residents. They deserve to be heard at every turn.
I, I appreciate that. I, I also wanted to cut the time from us as well. Castellino?
I'm okay. We're going three minutes and five. From running the meeting last year, the majority of people only utilize three minutes. The school board only gives three minutes. I do not want to put a time limit on us because I think it's our one and only opportunity to explain and ask our questions. Sometimes we need to wrap our brains around, you know, what's being put before us. I mean, you looked at the past two years, but we've also done a lot in the past two years. We had, you know, Rock Spring Purchase, we had redevelopment, you know, the, the, the library transaction. So we had a lot, the pandemic, you know, giving the public information. I talked about that last year. I know our conference agendas were very long. And, you know, but that was the need for information to the community. So, um, you know, again, I mean, we, we do a lot. We do a lot. So maybe those extra meetings during the year would help, maybe a work session would help. But, um, you know, we're, we're, we're here to also explain why we vote the way we do. And sometimes, I'm sorry, I need a few minutes for that. And I'm not going to apologize for that.
No, and, and I don't want you to interpret it that I'm, from, from our questioning and, and the discussions that we have. That's not what I meant. I meant from our council liaison reports that sometimes our conference agenda goes, you know, an hour, hour and a half, hour forty-five minutes. So that's where I was talking about, not where it comes to discussions about resolutions and things.
Well, well, we started at seven o'clock tonight, right on the nose.
Right on the nose.
So.
We had a very.
Always conference agenda. I think it's, I think what's in the agenda, Council President, note. And I maintain your role.
That's okay. Councilwoman McCartney, I think your hand was up too.
Oh, well, I was going to skip going, right now picking up where you just said about the conference agenda. I think to Councilwoman Castellino, as Council President, they were very long conference agendas, but we were in the midst of a pandemic. And I thought that that was very important to have those presentations throughout the past 10 months for the residents, for us to know what was happening. So, yeah, conference agenda, like we, you know, there's, I, I don't think this is going to fit into any kind of format. I think, you know, here we're just talking about having other presentations. We want to have the, the information upfront that may take long on account, conference agenda.
I don't. And we can, and we can, we can change the structure of the conference agenda so that when we have presentations like we did today, we had just a very brief update to council liaison. So I'm talking about restructuring our conference agenda to make sure that we start at seven o'clock. And if there is information from the administration, the mayor has, you know, said he's more than happy to have conference meetings where, you know, that they're in advance of, you know, whenever that is in advance of the council's regularly scheduled meeting so that we can hash things out. Obviously, they'll be public, no public participation. But, you know, those conference agenda meetings would be beneficial to all of us in advance of decision making.
And I think the point about the workshops, that may help us have these kind of healthy discussions if we did have workshops. So that we can hash a lot of this out first.
Absolutely. So happy to hear. Councilwoman Williams?
Are workshops open to the public for commentary? For commentary?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, they're public, they can watch, but there is no public discussion, public participation.
But if they're posted, then they could always submit questions or things that we can address if questions come up.
Well.
No, I guess not if there's an agenda.
No, no.
No. It, it's a work, it's a work session. I think it's specific to what we're discussing.
I get, I get a little bit concerned because of the Open Public Meetings Act. And, and I don't, I don't know that there's going to be any, I don't think there's going to be any case law about this. But, but the way that act is interpreted, it could be interpreted in different ways. It, it may be that if you have a conference session, even though you're not taking any formal action on anything, that you may have to provide the public with some time to make comment. I'm not, I'm not saying that's absolutely the case, but I'm not satisfied that I, I'd need to do a little research and, and think about it. The, some of the language in the Open Public Meetings Act suggests that if you have a public meeting, you have to give the, the public the opportunity to speak. I'm not sure you can differentiate between a conference meeting and a, and a, and a regular meeting. But I can, I can work on that.
Thank you. So, so as you're looking at that, Ken, then just so that we can wrap this up, do, do, do we have a council majority to support three minutes of public comments? And five of ordinance discussion for public comment?
Let me, let me just make, a, a point and a suggestion perhaps. I think that the way you would want to change the rules is perhaps, if, if everybody agrees with your general concept of limiting the time a bit further, make it tighter. I think that you want to have a safety valve so that the council has the right to expand the time if the council wants to do that. And if it seems inappropriate under the circumstances, you don't have to have a rule that's so strict. One of the problems we have in our rules now is there's no safety valve. There's no, there's nothing in there that says you can suspend the rules by a majority vote or by a two-thirds vote. I think suspension of rules always takes a two-thirds vote under Robert's rules. There's nothing in our ordinance that, that deal that says that. And if, if that's the case, I'm not sure you can do it legally. So there's a bunch of things that could be changed that may give you a little bit more flexibility. And on the one hand, I, I hear what Councilman Rutherford is saying with regard to the time and the public's ability to speak. All I can say is, as a, as a trial lawyer, and that's what I've been for almost 40 years, I've learned the lesson that less is more, and that's an increasingly true lesson in a, in a time when people talk in sound bites. Presentations need to be more focused. And, and if they are, they're going to be more effective. If people, members of the public, just as you, think about things more in advance and more carefully, you can give a better presentation when the time comes. And I think that's true of all of us, of everybody. So it's not the amount of time that's so significant. It's, it's just knowing what the time is so you can plan for it.
Thank you. So can you look into what we can and can I do it? And I don't know, were you able to circulate the rules? Can you circulate the rules of?
Sure, certainly. Yes, I can, I can circulate the rules and I can highlight some areas that I think maybe need some work. I can do that.
That'd be good. So everyone can have them and, and review them. But I still want a, a feel for, from my colleagues who would be supportive of that if we were to shorten the public comment time. And thank you, Ms. Williams, for, Councilwoman Williams, for looking at other meetings that have public comment.
You want me to do a roll call on the?
Could you, could you please? Thank you.
Sure. Councilwoman Castellino?
The three and five, yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes, because I know that that was not your intent. To, I'm sorry, not your intent to limit public comment.
Councilman Rutherford?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Matu Brown?
Yes. I think that that was all that was.
I, I just wanted to last my comment if I'm really under, I guess we're in new business. So I just wanted to make a comment, if I may, council colleagues. I know that many of you have been in your positions for several years. Many of our directors, people who do business in West Orange, in certain positions, you have very familial relationships with them, personable relationships. But I would just ask that because we are the governing body of West Orange, that when we come into this space, we use a little bit elevated decorum. We respectfully should be speaking to our directors as their director title. We should be referring to each other as council colleagues, councilwoman, councilman. And I would just like for us to elevate that just a little bit and just not be so comfortable when we're talking about those people that work for us in the community.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Well noted, well said. If there is nothing else from any of my council colleagues, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Well, that can.
We didn't deal with the.
We didn't deal with the animal control center that was supposed to be on.
Thank you. That's, thank you for saying.
Sorry.
That's okay. Well, I, I said, is there anything else? So Councilman Rutherford, I'm going to kick the ball over to you. I know that you arranged the meeting visit too, if you can share and elaborate.
So, thank you, Council President. Everyone's aware of the heightened attention being paid to our animal, animal control center. It is not an animal shelter. I learned that this week. There's a very distinct difference between the two. What I will say is, after visiting the site with Councilwoman Matu Brown, speaking with one of the animal control officers, also speaking with their supervisor, Mr. Fonzino, inspecting the entire building, speaking with our health department director, Ms. De novo. We all recognize there is a need to address some things there. I want to say first and foremost, at every turn so far, all of the people involved have been open and willing to have the conversation and entertain constructive criticism as well as recommendations to make the space better. Our next step that I'm involved in, I don't know what other council colleagues are, are doing, but I, I spoke with Ms. De novo. She is willing to sit with me, council, Councilwoman Matu Brown, and the Animal Welfare League to discuss some of these recommendations as well as determine how we can better service the animals and the residents given COVID. And so what I will ask from the public is a little time to execute on this. We are, I'm a dog lover. I think just about everybody on the council is an animal lover. So we are, are sensitive to what's going on there and are working to improve the quality of service and the outcomes we have for those animals. We don't want them there forever. We certainly want to make sure they get fostered or adopted. So to, to those that have sent emails and phone calls and text messages and, you know, pull on the coat when you're at ShopRite or wherever, we hear you and are working to address those issues, many of which were caused by COVID, but some of which were not. And we can, we can get some better outcomes there. So, so that's my commentary on it. If, if you need any more, I'm happy to, to elaborate.
Thank you. I, I do want to share that I spoke with the mayor as well, you know, and echo every sentiment that Councilman Rutherford just expressed. In speaking with the mayor, I asked his perspective of what the future looked like for the animal control facility. Would he be willing to entertain a rescue slash shelter transition? And obviously, that is a discussion that is tied to what happens next to the facility. As, as you all know, or you may, may or may not know, because of the redevelopment area and where, where the animal facility is right now, it has to be relocated. And I know that they have been talking to Livingston. There was a visit made to Livingston Animal Shelter. It is smaller. However, it can be worked out so that there is an expansion and we have shared services with them. That's also a discussion. Another Animal Welfare League has visited, is involved in those discussions. I'm saying this to say that, you know, it doesn't have to always remain an animal control facility. It is a discussion that we can have as council with administration as we move forward. But I, I echo Councilman Rutherford's sentiments that, you know, give us a little bit of time to, to try and figure this all out. I will say, I shared with Councilwoman Castellino earlier that, to the, and, and to the mayor, to the, to the immediate right of the facility, there is a long path of grassy area that is already fenced, but it doesn't have a gate. Perhaps if the township could temporarily put a gate there and volunteers can spend time with the dogs or the cats outside during COVID, it would facilitate more people volunteering in that open space because the shelter is very, very small. And they're staggering two employees as it is to ensure that there is no exposure. So perhaps that's a temporary means, and I know it's only temporary. But I, I'm sure my colleagues are also very much looking forward to those discussions moving forward. Williams?
Can you update us on how this additional information and activity and concern from the community has impacted those animals that work in the shelter when this first kind of came to a?
Thank you. Because that was on the tip of my mind and I forgot that quickly. So since the time of the advocates reaching out to us, there have been three adoptions at the, at the shelter, at the facility. So your voices are very impactful. You know, I'm always a believer in the power of the people. Recently, Cinnamon was just adopted. I, there's two more dogs, three dogs left at the shelter and two cats. So it, it's been positive. I know that they are taking appointments for visits and for adoption interests. When Councilman Rutherford and I were leaving, we saw a couple at the entrance of the facility to visit a dog. So there have been some adoptions and, and hopefully, you know, the other remaining dogs can find a home as well. Certainly willing to encourage and, and promote on social media. I saw that the township is already doing that. But I think we, we can all help in that regard as well a little. Councilwoman Cast, no, McCartney, I'm sorry. She had her hand up first.
Thank you. I, I really appreciate the conversation and I like the idea, you know, all of us trying to address the needs. I'm working and I, I do believe that volunteers, I, I understand that it's COVID, but I hope that there's a way, the way that we're scheduling residents to come and see the dogs if they are considering adoption, that there is a way that we can also schedule the volunteers to exercise the dogs and care for the dogs in a safe and responsible way. I'm, I'm hoping that we can move in that direction as well, even during COVID.
I'm sorry, Councilwoman. Castellino had her hand up, Council.
Yeah, I just want to thank all the, all the volunteers for coming out and, and being concerned and the attention that was paid to this situation. I, I do want to, I, I know the health department, there was a lot of, no criticism there, but again, in times of COVID, it, you know, really, there was a lot that they were, they were doing. And I know there was things that weren't doing in regards to this situation. And I, I, you know, not enough hours in a day, I guess. But we, we can be creative because we have been in other situations due to COVID. So I'm sure this will be resolved. But, you know, you know, thanking the, the volunteers for coming out to advocate for this was important. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Rutherford?
To, thank you, Council President. To Councilwoman McCartney's point, Mr. Fonzino was agreeable to increasing hours for volunteers to work with the animals. So we have made some progress. We, we will make more. So we have made some progress. We, we will make more, and, and that's what I was trying to get at. They are open to it. So I, I think we'll be able to get some better outcomes down the road. And, and for those, you know, I'm going to say this just, I'm new to the council, so for those that are still watching, you know, I generally won't go into details on conversations with township employees or leadership unless it's absolutely necessary. I need you to trust that I'm actually going to have those conversations and act on them. But I think it's important that we maintain a certain level of professionalism when it comes to speaking about the people that are performing these services for us as employees and also as, as volunteers. This is not to hide anything, but it is to maintain a level of decorum and, and a, and a working relationship with folks on both sides of the aisle. So I'm done for the commentary. I hope for the rest of the night.
I think, I think we are pretty much all done. If there is nothing else from my council colleagues?
No.
No, okay. Can I have a motion? I'm making a motion too.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
I was going to say, Councilwoman Castellino beat you to that one this time.
That's all right. It's all good.
West Orange, have a good night. Thank you for those who are still on, and we will see you on the night. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Everybody.
Thank you.
This is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, I'll end for those both on and off screen, and no other business will be conducted. Thank you all and have a good morning.
Please stay safe.
Don't rub it in.
Bye, guys.
Good night.